A regular meeting of the Goodyear City Council, 11 September 2006. Mr. Mayor, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On this, the fifth anniversary of the attack on the World Trade Center and the Pentagon, let us ask the Lord his continuing protection over our own first responders here in Goodyear. Let us also express our heartfelt grief for the relatives of those lost on 9/11 and pray that all who have lost their lives to terrorism over the last three decades rest in peace. Amen. All council members are in attendance. We have the minutes, staff minutes, of a regular meeting held on August 28th presented for council review and approval. Are there any comments on the minutes? Could I have a motion?
I move to accept the motion.
Second, motion from Councilmember Lord and a second from Councilmember Scott. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, seven zero. We have no expenditures to ratify. Now we'll move to communications and opportunity for the council or anyone from the public to issue a commendation to any other citizen. Would anyone like to speak in that specific regard? Okay, now we'll move to council members' reports on current events. Councilmember Holland?
Last week I attended the Cotton Lane Bridge groundbreaking and I was really impressed with how smoothly it went. They tried a different approach instead of giving us all shovels to dig in the earth, thank goodness. They used a regular bucket shovel and pulled the dirt out and dumped it on the side. Georgia attended for some and the mayor was there and I just thought it was very, very well done and very smooth and lots of folks were there, so I was real pleased. The other thing that's going on is working with the council administrative assistant to come up with a motivational speaker for our employee summit day and I think that you guys are going to be very surprised. We've come up with somebody and he's very excited about doing it for us and I think you're going to be pleased, especially in light of the fact that we just sent the Atlantis up to the space station, so I hope you guys will be excited. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to say that I handed out each one of you a piece of paper on the results of what you probably read in the paper on the governor's summit on housing and also the, there's a brochure that you'll have to share, I didn't have enough copies for everyone to have each one, but it gives you statistics on housing up through the end of first quarter of 2006, so you might want to look that over.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lord?
Yes, on Friday, September 8th, I attended the Model Tax Code Commission and at that time we were brought up to date on all the latest state legislation from the 2006 session. And just to give you an example of some of the things that were resulted in that session, I thought this was a bit significant in my view anyway. SB 1068 that prohibits the cities and towns from taxing development or impact fees that are included in a construction or development contract as of September 1st, 06. And then Saturday, September 11th, it was my honor to attend the city of Tempe Healing Field Memorial, it was their first memorial in memory of all those lives lost at 9/11 attack. Senator Kyle along with 12 mayors as far as Yuma, Donna Byrd, the honorary chairman, a widow from the 9/11, spoke and we all had the opportunity to read the names of the victims of the terrorist attack. You know, this is a real reminder that it can and did happen here in America and we must be diligent in fighting terrorism. Thank you.
Thank you. Over the last couple of months, we've had certainly communications issues on council and I would like to make sure that I apprise the council of what's going on in the life of the mayor, so I'd like to give you a better update than I've been giving you in the past. And if I could start very briefly tonight, over the last two weeks, I did meet with Senator Kyle. We talked about how the federal government could help us pay the interest costs on I-10 widening and we expect between $750,000 to $2-plus million dollars from the federal government sometime within the next five or six months that'll help us pay the, as you know, $12 million in interest costs. Met with Dr. Lovett, the prior president of NAU, and at lunch and we spoke about what Goodyear's planning to do, bring higher ed to Goodyear, and she's very supportive of that and I suspect she's gone on a very lengthy trip. When she returns, I hope to have her assistance in this matter. Had lunch with Governor Napolitano and it was primarily due to my role as the mag chair and we talked about transportation within the valley and actually within the state through meshing the various councils of government. Met with Major Hawker as the previous chair, he indoctrinated me into my new role. Met with Notre Dame College, their developer who is Forest Cities and the developers in the audience are familiar with that name, and our local developers to see how we can accommodate the needs of Notre Dame College. Met with several departments in the city individually to discuss the assessment and how that will affect them. Met with Matrix in a kickoff meeting for the assessment. Councilmember Souza and Antoniak agreed to meet periodically with Matrix and get an update on the status of the assessment and then apprise the council as necessary, so there'll be our connections there. As with councilmembers Lord and Holland, I attended the Cotton Lane Bridge groundbreaking, made a few comments. Later that day, we found out that EPA did not sign on in support of the Floodway 404, so there's a delay anticipated in the Cotton Lane Bridge. And then this morning, attended the 9/11 memorial dedication in Phoenix.
Easy read.
Okay, manage your summary of current events?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we don't have anything to report right at the moment.
Okay, opportunity now for citizens to make any comment on any item that is not on this evening's agenda. Any comments on an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda and I'll ask the clerk to read the consent items by title only, please.
Item 8A, council will consider adopting an ordinance number 061024 of the Council of the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending Chapter 15-1-2 of the City Code and adding Section 9 Minor Land Divisions to create an administrative review and approval process for minor land divisions, lot splits, land splits, and lot line adjustments. B, council will consider adopting Resolution 061073 of the Mayor Council of the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving review of fees for minor land division application in amount of $500,000 and providing for an effective date. Item C, council will consider adopting Ordinance 061023 extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, State of Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title 9, Chapter 4, Article 7, Arizona Revised Statutes and amendments thereto by annexing portions of Maricopa County rights away along Campbell Back Road, Indian School Road, Perryville Road, and Citrus Road, which are contiguous to the existing city limits of the City of Goodyear. Item D, council will consider adopting final plat for Sudea Parcel 1A subdividing 38.5 acres into 85 single-family lots generally located at the northeast corner of Indian School Road and Sudea Parkway within the Sudea Plan area of development subject to stipulations. E, council will consider adopting final plat for Sudea Parcel 1B subdividing 27.9 acres into 81 single-family lots generally located one-quarter mile north of the northeast corner of Indian School Road and Sudea Parkway within the Sudea Plan area development subject to stipulations. Item F, council will consider adopting final plat for Sudea Parcel 1C subdividing 39.1 acres into 69 single-family lots generally located at the southwest corner of Citrus Road and Campbell Avenue within the Sudea Plan area development subject to stipulation. Item G, council will consider adopting final plat for Sudea Parcel 1D subdividing 52.5 acres into 64 single-family lots generally located one-quarter mile west of the southwest corner of Citrus Road and Campbell Avenue within the Sudea Plan area development subject to stipulations. H, council will consider adopting final plat for Sudea Phase 1 Block Plat subdividing 158.1 acres into two parcels, 21 tracks and streets rights away generally located at the northwest corner of Citrus Road and Indian School Road within the Sudea Plan area development subject to stipulations. I, council will consider adopting final plat for Canyon Trails Courthomes subdividing 13.6 acres into five lots and three tracks generally located one-quarter mile east of the northeast corner of Cotton Lane and Van Vieren Street within the Canyon Trails planned area development subject to stipulations. J, council will consider approval of a final plat from Taylor Wood drove homes to subdivide 115.8 acres into 324 single-family lots, 24 tracks for residential development known as Los Grises Phase 1 generally located at the southeast corner of Perryville Road and Lower Buckeye Road subject to stipulations. K, council will approve a memorandum of understanding for $40,000 to participate in a regional transportation study for the southwest Maricopa, northwest Pinnell County region, which includes parts of Goodyear, Buckeye, Hila Bend, Maricopa, Casa Grande, El Eloy, the Coolidge, the Hila River, and ancient Indian communities and unincorporated portions of Maricopa and Pinnell Counties. All parties have recommended the Maricopa Association of Governments will serve as the lead agency for this project. L, council will consider authorizing the city manager to execute a grant of utility easement to Arizona Public Services Company for electrical conduit and conductor that will provide power for four streetlights on Avalon Drive at the interest of Goodyear Community Park. M, council will consider approving payment to APS in amount of $185,000 and authorize staff to execute an authorization to bill from APS Company to replace existing overhead electric lines with underground lines. N, council will consider authorizing the city manager to award a contract in the amount of $100,000 to Separation Processes Incorporated for professional engineering services to provide system support, process optimization, ongoing operator training, and membrane water treatment system consultation throughout the city. The city manager is authorized to execute all documents. Item O, council will consider authorizing the city manager to award a professional services contract to HDR Engineering Incorporated for engineering services to improve the 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facility, a flowing delivery system. The contract amount shall not exceed $130,000. Item P, council will consider approving and entering into the First Amendment to Prefunding and Reimbursement Agreement concerning the payment of fees and costs pertaining to the design and construction of public infrastructure and amendment to the agreement among the City of Goodyear, West Core/Goodyear LLC, and Wood Patel and Associates Incorporated in order to further the beneficial objectives of these parties for the timely development of the McDowell Road commercial quarter. Item Q, council will consider awarding a construction manager at risk guaranteed maximum price contract not to exceed $15,491,721.73 to Poulos Construction Incorporated for the improvement of Van Vieren Street from Litchfield Road to Estrella Parkway and authorize an increase in the project budget of $21,222,631 to include consultant services and right-of-way acquisition. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Gelsner? Which one?
I would like item Q, sir, the $21 million contract.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Shaun Lake would like to remove item 8I.
Aye. Aye, okay, let me make sure. Shaun, that's the final plat for Canyon Trails Courthomes?
Correct.
Okay, others from the public? Okay. Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I have a question on agenda item number three.
Just a question?
Just a question.
Okay.
The clerk read.
C, who has C? Let me ask the clerk how she read it.
Would you read the ordinance again on C?
Resolution 06, that's a resolution. Oh, I'm on, sorry, I'm on nine. 8C?
Yeah.
Ordinance 061023 extending and increasing the corporate limits of the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County.
I'm reading it, 061023.
What am I saying? What is she saying?
0923.
Just say it. Can I say 1023? Yes, 1023.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Further items from council? Okay, I too would like to pull Q and I have a question on I. No, not I, it's, it's been pulled. On P, does our agreement to approve P during consent affect in any way our decision related to business action item one on the West Core?
Good question. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's not, it's tied only that it's going to be one of the costs that are part of the project, but essentially what it is, is it's going to be reimbursing, or excuse me, it's an agreement for West Core to actually fund construction for Pebble Creek Parkway to advance that to Sun Core in advance of the improvement district forming. So it would be tied as part of the total improvement district cost, but it's not tied directly to the development agreement as itself, it just really does a brief funding for that particular construction. But again, it will be tied later in the reimbursements.
Does it affect the development agreement?
Yes, it would affect the development agreement.
Does it inhibit our ability to discuss ad nauseam our development agreement and deny the development agreement if we so choose to do so?
It would, if you ended up approving this, it would not preclude you from going into as much detail as you wanted on the development agreement.
Would it, would we still be able to deny the development agreement this evening if we approved P?
Yes.
So this will scandal them?
This is a scam alone.
It would not be hypocritical or anything to approve this and then deny the development agreement. Everybody set aside?
Not that I anticipate.
Okay, all right, so we have, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 8A through Q excluding I and Q.
So move.
I have a motion from Councilmember Susan, a second from Councilmember Antoniak. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye. No, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Cavallier?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
And Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Okay, then we're down to I and Q and I guess who has I from the staff? I is Steve?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, would you like a full presentation or do you or the council just have questions?
I'm not sure, but Shaun, it was pulled by the public, it's hard for me to say.
I can do a full presentation, man.
I should defer to the question and then Steve, stand by, we'll go from there.
Mayor, council members, my name is Shaun Lake, 1930 East Brown Road here on behalf of CHI. First, let me express our appreciation for being here. We're delighted to be in your community and look forward to building this project and we're anxious to move forward on this project. Really, the reason that I am here this evening has to do primarily, or has to do with condition number 34. Condition number 34 reads, overnight parking shall not be permitted in the driveways and such prohibitions shall be included in the CCNRs for this development. That condition was contained, our understanding, in the preliminary plat not during the rezoning process, but during the subdivision process of this project. We would like to have that condition removed. We object to that condition. And we have looked at this, this, the prohibition of parking is a land use restriction. Parking is a use of land and to prohibit parking is a land use restriction and should have been dealt with during the PAD process, not during the plating process. The plating process deals with state law of how you subdivide property, not how you use the property. And so it is our opinion that both either the state statutes, the city subdivision ordinance, or the original zoning does not allow this provision to be contained within the plat. And so we would respectfully request that that be removed, number 34. That's the legal issue and I'll just get that out on the table. That's our opinion, we would request and we would object to that. From a practicality standpoint, I would come before this council and just make a pleading unto this council from a enforceability standpoint of this for both the Future Homeowners Association here and for the city. You have a situation where you are prohibiting parking in somebody's private driveway in front of their own garage and you're saying you're not allowed to park in your own private driveway overnight. Now, we can differ in opinion on whether that's attractive aesthetically, whether that makes good sense, whether that's a good thing or not from a legal standpoint. And from an enforceability standpoint, I would say that that is very difficult to enforce, both for the HOA if they choose not to enforce it and for the city, it's my understanding that becomes a criminal parking ticket, should the city go out and start writing tickets to people's cars parked in their own driveway. I'm not sure the city wants to get involved in that business. And so that's more of the lighter side of it, the pleading side of it, the first part was more of the legal side. So we would request that you move forward with this plat, let us move forward with this project, we're excited about it, but delete condition number 34. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll just stand by and let Steve get up, please, and then just, okay. Do you have any, what you're reasoning for?
I think it was us. Mayor, if I could, I remember that distinctly, actually it was not staff's idea, it actually came from the council and I remember that distinctly because when I left and I went back home thinking it over, I was feeling a little badly the way I voted, thinking that we were putting something on this community that we have in our community, but we have police force in our community and they do not, other than the Goodyear.
Security force.
Security force, thank you.
They've got a police force, too.
Well, they think they're police force, but they're security force. Police force, security force, thank you, council. So I was feeling a little apprehensive of how I voted and in my view, I'm willing to remove this.
So it was on the preliminary plat because of council?
We brought it up.
We added it to the preliminary?
We added it to it, okay.
Okay, is that, you agree that's the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the same question, I thought we had put that on ourselves, but let me ask you this, is there a time limit that you would agree to over a period of, say, 48 hours or longer? Or do you feel that it's okay if they use the driveway to park in and use their garage for storage? I mean, that's generally what happens. So would you, like 48 hours or two or three days or could a car sit there? How long could a car sit there?
Mayor, council member, or mayor, vice mayor, the issue of storage or what you do on your individual lot are commonly regulated or dealt with in CCNRs and that's a private matter between the landowner and its own homeowners association.
H.
Yeah, the homeowners association in this instance. However, again, that goes to a land use restriction on this property and our position would be that that would be an improper regulation of land through the subdivision process. Now, if the council chose to do it during the PAD process, that's a land use restriction and so whether, it probably will have it conditions in their CCNRs dealing with storage, like if somebody's car's up on blocks in the driveway, that's not permitted. But in this instance, most, you will have people parking in their driveway overnight. That's a very common occurrence.
What I was alluding to was the fact that a car sits there for several weeks, the tires go flat, it still sits in the driveway, it isn't on blocks or anything, but tires are flat, it looks, it doesn't look, it's not something we want, that they would want in their community and would there be a restriction?
Mayor, vice mayor?
As a timeline?
Mayor, vice mayor, as a point of private regulation, we certainly will have something that in our CCNRs. But that's something between, that's a private issue between the HOA and the lot or the condominium owner. But we won't permit that.
Councilmember Scott?
I agree, this is not a gated community, so we're going to create something here that we can't enforce.
That's right.
It doesn't make any sense. And I'm not sure how it got in there either, but I would vote to remove it, thank you.
Wouldn't, just to bring up, wouldn't city code take, code compliance take care of that car in the park there in four days and the fire?
Mr. Mayor? Entertained a motion? Just one question and then, how do we handle the Beazer Courthomes?
Mayor, council, to my recollection, there is not a stipulation similar to that and Beazers are allowed to park in their driveway.
Yeah, I just, I remember kind of, the discussion was weak at best when we did have it, so I'll move that we approve item 8I excluding stipulation number 34.
Second?
Okay, a motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Lord. Just, okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, seven zero. Okay, we're now down to the last item on the consent, it's consent Q and it was pulled by both the public and the council. Public, Mr. Gelsner?
Gary Gelsner, returning from a voyage of discovery, you know, it's great, it's great to be back, but I did miss you. Mayor, we're gonna, this item, you're going to spend $21 million of the city's money and I have, in all my meetings that I've attended, I've never seen any renditions of what Van Vieren Parkway or Van Vieren Street is going to look like. I have no idea what the Bullard intersection's going to look like, I have no idea what the Bullard Wash Bridge is going to look like and I think the public, I think council, when you're going to spend this amount of money, I think we ought to at least see some type of description, you know, more than just words that, you know, this is the way Bullard, that Van Vieren is going to look. And so that was why I requested that the item be pulled. I support the project, I think this is a very important project, however, I just would like, not like to go see, go into it, you know, blind. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on this particular matter, staff would be willing, if you would like to delay this matter till a little later in the agenda, they will go and get the appropriate documents that Mr. Gelsner's referring to.
Did we not have an open meeting? I thought I attended one, I'm at Van Vieren and I thought we had drawings, so.
Staff advises that, yes, we did have that open meeting, but I think the question this evening is maybe Mr. Gelsner was not present at that time, therefore he didn't get the benefit of.
He was out sunning.
And that, you know, maybe there's particular questions that the council may have on this, so if we could delay it until staff can go and get the appropriate documents for you.
Yeah, I have questions on this one, too. I'm really concerned about the cost of this project. Would you like to delay it for business?
Well, I think, I have questions on the cost. I called today and I had someone to answer, but you're right, we need to discuss it.
Okay, why don't we put it on the agenda for business? It's the last item, is that all right, Al?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move that to the business, part of our agenda. We'll now consider, we now are in the business part of our agenda, we'll consider adoption of a resolution for the Westcore Mall. Ian Brian Dahlke will present.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity. Tonight, you'll be considering adopting resolution number zero-six-dash-one-zero-seven-four that will authorize city manager to execute a development agreement with Westcore, Goodyear LLC, tied to reimbursements for certain public infrastructure. And it's important to note that this particular action, per state statute, requires a two-thirds vote, so that would be five aye votes for this, for this particular item to pass tonight. We have prepared--
If it did not pass, is it delayed a year, or how's that work? No? Okay, so, okay.
We do have PowerPoint tonight to try and summarize this, this document. It ended up being over seventy pages as far as the development agreement. We thought it would be very good for both council and also the public to, to understand, just to see the summary of what we're proposing tonight. A little bit of the history on this particular project. We've been working with Westcore and Globe Corporation for the past several years regarding this regional mall. It's been known for a long time that this has been a selection by Westcore, and again, to work closely with Globe to convert this or actually develop it into a regional mall. And if you remember back to February, those members of the council that were on council February two thousand and one, it was actually on Valentine's Day, I'm reminded, and council approved a development agreement at that time that specifically dealt with the right-of-way for the preparation of this project, understanding there were going to be significant rights-of-way required as part of this particular project. Now that the project's nearing what I would call the active development phase, it, we are looking at moving this forward, and we're going to be talking a little bit tonight about an improvement district the council will be considering later, October eleventh. But to really tie this all to infrastructure, which is the meat of what we're discussing tonight. There's a public process involved, or state statutes that require certain stipulations be met as council considers development agreements. And we are referencing both ARS nine-dash-five-hundred-point-oh-five, which really deals with public infrastructure, and then its companion, point eleven, that deals with the economic development side of, of development agreements. And as such, we, we ended up following both statutes. So what council did on August twenty-eighth is they adopt, they adopted a notice of intent to enter into this development agreement. What that did is it basically allowed the public to understand that council would be considering this tonight. We had on file with the clerk's office, a copy of the development agreement, and so it could be looked at, reviewed by the public if, if they so choose. And the other thing is, is we were required to have independent findings that this development agreement, in fact, had met the letter of the law. In other words, there were going to be more benefits to the city than, than the developer. And we did have that done by Applied Economics as part of that process. So where we're at now, the key parts of this project is the improvement district is needed to build the infrastructure in the mall, around the mall. I mean, roads, bridges, Bullard Wash, and just the infrastructure to handle over two million square feet of retail development. So it's a very intensive project as it relates to infrastructure. We also, the other key part of this is the development agreement itself. And the development agreement that you're considering tonight really focused, the staff approached this with two items in mind, specific items, and that is, is the development of the regional mall itself, not necessarily the ancillary retail around it. That wasn't the intent of this, it was really to ensure that the community gets a regional mall. And the other is construction of the tens of millions of dollars in public infrastructure that's required. The development agreement, and it just very briefly establishes the obligations of the parties. It provides a phasing plan for the development. Because a project will be developed in phases, it's, you're talking three hundred-plus acres, so it's a very large project, and it will take time to, to develop this. It's also identify that public infrastructure that has a benefit to the public, and to look at how can, how can we work reimbursement agreements out to, for those public improvements. The negotiation team members, and this is, this is, this is a primary group, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, there were a lot of folks involved in this. From Westcore, their, their team, Dave Schole, Rob Bassett, Garrett Newland, Christine McRight, and the attorneys, Gary Bernbaum and James Patterson, and Ray Carter with Globe Corporation was there at, at some of the meetings as well. So it was, it was really to try and, and get the, the team members together that, that could talk about all the details necessary for this agreement. On the city side, it was myself, Holly Childs, the Economic Development Director, Rorick Massey. We did hire, retain the services of David Parnards, who is here tonight, who will be talking real briefly after my presentation's over with, and Scott Ruby. And Scott, mostly because of the, the improvement district side of this, he will be representing the city as it relates to the improvement district, and since the two are so tightly tied, we felt like we needed that legal counsel as well. Project timeline. Infrastructure improvements were literally, and with part of what council approved in the First Amendment pre-funding agreement tonight, you're, we're going to start seeing public roads being installed very quickly, as early as the winter of two thousand and six, and we're going to see major construction. I'll point out on an exhibit as far as where that will be. But, and that will continue through fall of two thousand and eight. The mall itself, over one point three million square feet of build-out, Phase One, is looking at spring or fall two thousand and nine, I'll let Westcore address timelines specifically, as they're the ones that are really working closely with those retailers that are making, providing a lot of input on those decisions. And also the remaining portion, we're looking at over another two-year period of five hundred thousand. The power center, and I'll, the next slide, I'll be able to point that out. Power center where that's located, another almost eight hundred thousand square feet of retail coming in on, on phases, principally at McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway.
Oh, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes. Oops, sorry.
This is, you know, this is just reaching back in my memory, and I just think that this might be a question we'd get from some of our constituents. Phase one, the eight hundred and fifty thousand square feet, spring or fall of two thousand and nine, did that used to say two thousand and eight?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Holland, the projection that we'd been working on for some time ago was absolutely fall two thousand and eight. And I would ask that Westcore addresses the timelines a little bit later in their presentation, but you're right, that, that was a date that was put out there for quite some time. The public infrastructure area, if you look at this, you'll see on the left side Pebble Creek Parkway, all the lines that are in the dark lines constitute the improvement district. We have Mr. Peter Hemingway with, with Patel here tonight, who is the city's improvement district engineer, should any technical questions come up. But you'll see that it, it covers most Pebble Creek Parkway, and it will also look at going all the way over to Bullard, of course, and all the way to Interstate Ten. It will not include the interchange itself, that will be a separate ADOP project. But you can see it's a fairly large area within those boundaries is where all this public infrastructure will take place. Conceptual land use, if you look at this map, it's the area that is, you see the gray areas there. Those are properties that are going to be controlled by Westcore, working with Globe Corporation. But the area that, you'll see the regional mall, just north of McDowell Road, it's the whiteout area, and that's what we call the regional mall itself, a little over a hundred acres. So that's, that's a sighting of that adjacent to Bullard Avenue and McDowell Road and Canal Parkway on the north. The community benefits of the regional mall, or the development agreement specifically, is the regional mall will get developed. We're looking at advanced road improvements in this area, advanced as, as far as them, all the road improvements being done very quickly, as opposed to taking time to get those done. Significant sales tax revenues that we can use for additional municipal services. The other benefit is a fully improved Bullard Wash between Virginia Avenue and McDowell Roads, and we'll have a rendering of that. And I need to coach that that is a rendering as we continue to work through those details. This is Bullard Wash itself, Virginia Road on the avenue on the north, and you'll see it continuing to the south to McDowell Road, and that big green block on the bottom is up against Interstate Ten. That portion would be developed at another time. Right now, it's owned by County Flood Control District, so we don't have the rights to develop that or improve that, although there will be some channel improvements done in that section. But principally, we're looking at a regional park that could be used from McDowell Road north to Virginia Avenue. And if you look closely at this, you'll actually see some lights in there. We're looking at Ramadas, shade areas, and it may not be as green as it looks right now, but we need to, we're looking at some park areas, certainly, grass areas, but we're looking at zero, zero scape, desert scapes as well, and how that blends together. So staff's been working closely with the engineering group and their design engineers on that. But that is a, in lieu of the city actually constructing that, that would be funded by Westcore as part of the reimbursement agreement. The key points of this development agreement are public infrastructure over the next couple of years to support the mall, as stated earlier. There will be a police substation of about five hundred and fifty square feet within the mall area itself, and that will be leased at a nominal lease rate, basically just to cover the cost, what we call common area costs, those types of things. Community room of at least a thousand square feet, and the city would have rights to use that at no charge. There will be an informational kiosk, and if it, that would be there available for however we want to use it. It hasn't been defined right now, we do have it in the development agreement, but we think it's a great opportunity to provide a public service or to get public information out. Transit stop, potentially shuttle system may be able to use this, this would be in the interior of the mall area. Obviously, there would be bus stops out on the arterials, but as it relates to the transit stop itself, that'd be the interior. Six hundred thousand dollars funded by Westcore over a three-year period to enhance the police force, and that would be at two hundred thousand dollars a year for three years. And that is not subject to reimbursement. In fact, none of these are. Equipment to maintain radio coverage, we want to make sure that our public safety has ability to be able to communicate at all times, so we found in our research that it's very important to have some equipment there to make sure we have that communication. Westcore will also be funding additional planning inspection staff. You well imagine the amount of plans that are going to be coming through on this, the inspections out in the field. If you look at a whole bunch of stores opening at one time, there will be a lot of inspectors that are going to be required as part of that, so Westcore will be funding that. Fully improved Bullard Wash Park, as I talked about previously. And then there are, there's, there's area in the development agreement that speaks to the quality of the regional mall, and the quality is comparable to what you see here, Chandler Fashion Square, Kirland Commons, Scottsdale Fashion Square, Arrowhead Town Center. And as it relates to, to quality, if you have specific questions as it relates to that, I encourage you to, to ask Westcore for any specific information. And a mix of first-quality national regional tenants, it's outlined in the development agreement and itself, and it actually speaks to some of those that they're anticipating bringing in. They're very typical of malls themselves. Sales tax revenue projections, it's no secret that malls are terrific revenue generators, and we are projecting three hundred and eighty-four million dollars for, between two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine. Well, this includes--
Two thousand and twenty-seven.
To two thousand and twenty-seven. But this includes a retail center adjacent to that, so it does, would start in two thousand and eight. And we're looking at prior to build-out, about seven to nine ninety a year, and then as you get the mall built out, it ramps up to about twelve to twenty million dollars per year, so it's very significant. In addition, there's a construction sales tax of nine million dollars that we're estimating that would be revenues to the city as well. The reimbursement part of the agreement, we're estimating seventy-eight million dollars, and it's over a twenty-five-year period tied to the improvement district. And this is an assessment that would actually be carried by the property tax, or assessment that would be assessed to Westcore over time, and they would be liable for the payments. So this would be a reimbursement for that public infrastructure that I outlined previously. So about sixty-eight million dollars is, we're looking at being assessed to Westcore. Those numbers will be finalized as we go forward with the improvement district. Those are very close to final estimates at this point, and that's what we're working from. Additionally, ten million dollars, we call those bundled improvements. This really supports a couple of things, quite the development agreement that was approved in two thousand and one, provided that the city would, would purchase or acquire the rights-of-way through compensation. And what we're looking at now is we've increased that right-of-way requirement from a little over twenty acres to now close to seventy-five acres. So that's about twenty-three percent of their project area is going to be public rights-of-way, so it's a significant amount of land that the city would be receiving. The interest is, because the city will be going through an improvement district, or will be considering that on October eleventh through resolution of intent, the, it would be the city's borrowing rate, if you will, for that improvement district. Keep in mind, it's our rate, it's their assessment. The city would have no assessments as part of this improvement district, which is, we felt it very important to keep us from making payments, quite frankly, directly to the improvement district. So those are being absorbed by Westcore, and there is an interest provision at our rate, and that retires as soon as the principal's required. And the last portion, probably the, the other key portion I wanted to point out as I come to a close, is the differential on current impact fees. And there's a provision in there for the mall area portion, that hundred-acre portion itself, that if the development fees increase, Westcore would still be responsible for paying our current three dollars and thirty cents per square foot, if you will. And they'd actually pay the entire amount, but the reimbursement would be for that difference between the three thirty and what it ends up being if, in fact, we do increase it. So that's another provision of the development agreement. How do we, where do we get the source of funds for this? As I stated earlier, we're not assessing ourselves as part of the improvement district. This'll, there, we're getting millions and millions of dollars of public infrastructure as part of this, this agreement, and it's going to be reimbursed basically on the performance of the mall itself. So it's tied to the sales tax revenues that come from the mall, come from its surrounding areas, the, the Westcore areas. And we're also using, of that seventy-eight million, not in addition to, but of that seventy-eight million, twenty-five of that is considered regional improvements where we're using a, a larger area to, to use for reimbursements. That includes for Bullard Wash and some of those areas like that. And this would be the area that we call the additional reimbursement tax base area. If, this is standing on its sides, so north is to the right, or, excuse me, to the left, and Interstate Ten is to the right. It's the shaded areas, but essentially what this is, it's the Tang Properties, it's the Evergreen Devco property, and it's the Grace Development property that would be used with Westcore's sales tax-generated areas to reimburse the twenty-five million first. And once that's reimbursed, this area goes away, and it's strictly Westcore's generated areas that reimburses the balance of that estimated seventy-eight million dollars. areas that reimburses the balance of that estimated $78 million.
$78 million is included in the 25?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. So
I should say the 25.
With that, that includes staff's presentation. I would ask that Mr. Dave Parnards, who has worked closely with the city and has represented the city, and working closely with Mr. Massey, to add a few comments. And then certainly, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, your direction, we can answer questions. I'd also ask an opportunity to have West Core make comments too, if that works out.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. David Parnards, Parnards Law Firm. Been good to be working with the town and with your, with the city and with your city manager's office, your city attorney on this project. Brian stole a lot of my thunder. I don't know, poor man, if that means I'm turning him into an attorney or not, but I wouldn't wish that on him. We did have a lot of things here that did tie back, as Mr. Doc mentioned, to the, both the 2001 development agreement, but even further back to the stipulations of the planned regional center zoning, both of which called for right-of-way dedications, but called for compensation for that right-of-way for the arterial streets through some future reimbursement agreement. And the 2001 agreement, when that happened, Maricopa County was actually in the process of condemning some right-of-way at the time as well. That agreement called for a future reimbursement agreement through sales tax reimbursements or fee waivers or things of that nature to compensate the property owner and/or West Core in the future for right-of-way that was given at that time, back in 2001 and since. So that's a significant component of this agreement. It's not the only component of it. There've been a lot of additional public improvements, as Mr. Doc mentioned, that have been added that the community will receive out of the project. I think it's important to note as well, there are some additional land use restrictions. We've heard in a previous item tonight, you know, you're regulating land use. Well, that's one thing a development agreement is allowed to do, especially under 9500.05. And there are some additional land use restrictions on Exhibit G to the agreement that are being voluntarily imposed upon the property through the development agreement, and that's the entire project. Also, there are appropriate development triggers that are built into the agreement in order to comply with the reimbursement mechanism and to trigger that mechanism. And if, and what we really did as we went through the negotiation process was to tie that back to the regional center. It doesn't matter if you get power center after power center on the project. If you don't get the regional shopping center, you don't get what you were really bargaining for. So that's what we tied that to, and that's been appropriately provided for in the development agreement. As noted, there are provisions to go outside the regional shopping center and the project boundaries itself for the limited purpose of the reimbursement of the first portion, the first slice of that $78 million is not in addition, as the vice mayor asked. The first slice of that $78 million that you could say is truly regional nature is under the Bullard Wash improvements and things of that kind. So it's all project-driven. Yes, there's an interest component and so forth, but it's at a 50% deal, and if it doesn't generate it by the end of the date, it's capped in the agreement, and it doesn't get fully reimbursed, you're off the hook. Then they built the infrastructure and they paid the, they're not off the hook for paying the ID bonds, but you're off the hook for reimbursements. If you don't get the mall and if it doesn't get paid back enough money to the developer over enough time, they're taking the development risk. You're not taking the development risk. It's entirely performance-driven, and that's how we try to build these to protect the city. So those are some of the things I wanted to talk about, about how the reimbursement mechanism works. It's the zoning is currently in effect. If there are any changes to the zoning that need to be done, those have to come through your public hearing process. Nobody's giving away zoning by contract here tonight if you approve the development agreement. You're not forming an improvement district tonight. But there are provisions in the development agreement that if the council chooses not to form an improvement district, and if those improvements are financed by the developer, then they become part of the 50% reimbursement over. So if for some reason you choose not to float those bonds and to build the ID, the developer can still do those improvements through their own financing, and that becomes part of the reimbursement mechanism. So that's why it came out to be 75 pages. It's because we tried to deal with a very complex subject, had a lot of different components to it, and do justice to covering what you need to have covered to make sure you get what you're supposed to get out of the deal. So that's, it's as non-legalese as I can make it. So be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Further staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the only other thing that I was thinking about as Mr. Parnards was talking is that, again, this development agreement is tied to the infrastructure. There will be an opportunity for the mall itself, portions of it, that will come before council through some of the site planning process and development guidelines, design guidelines, some of those types of things. So it's a, it's a project that you're going to see more of as they go forward. This is really looking at the infrastructure portion of it, so there will be more public input and certainly council involvement. With that, Mr. Mayor could answer questions or, I would like to invite West Core up first to make any remarks if they may want to, and then open it up for questions if that works.
Yes, opportunity for the applicant.
Mayor, council, good evening. I'm Garrett Newland with West Core, 11411 North Tatum Boulevard, Phoenix. Well, here we are. We came originally in the late 1990s, eight years ago. Started working on a location in the Southwest Valley and identified, through a lot of hard work, location in Goodyear, and that's what we're here to, first step of what we're here to talk about tonight. We're very excited to be part of the city of Goodyear and to start implementing what will be the next great retail definition in greater Phoenix. I'm sure we've expressed to you our Phoenix 2020 strategy that West Core came up with, which is designed around trying to identify the best location to serve each market around the valley and to bring it forward at the right time. And when we put together that plan in 2003, again, it validated the Goodyear site here as the appropriate location to do a regional mall project. So we're excited to be moving forward with it at this time. I would introduce our team, but Brian already did that. As a matter of fact, he did a great job of outlining the nuts and bolts of the development agreement. I would, though, like to thank the mayor and council for the work, and really commend the work that their staff has done through this project. Brian Dahlke, Steve Cleveland, Loric Massey, Holly Childs, Kim Bindon, many others on the staff, as well as the attorneys that you folks put together to work on this. It was a great collaborative effort and over a year of work on a very complex infrastructure solution to get it to where it is tonight, and one that I think works very well for property owners in the area. It also works very well for residents of the community, and it's going to bring some, again, regional infrastructure all together at one time to serve what will be a very important commercial core for the city of Goodyear moving forward from here. I should also thank some of the other developers in the area that have worked closely with the city on this. Suncor, Evergreen Deathco, Grace Companies, and other property owners that have stepped up and put together, again, a collaborative effort. This is a significant task to put together with the efforts of Woodpatel, a, again, a comprehensive solution for a significant infrastructure. Brian outlined some of the details of the improvement district. I don't need to go into that, but four miles, over four miles of public streets and other improvements that would be built all at the same time, hopefully limiting the disruption of traffic to the residents in the area. Also, I wanted to express our gratitude to the mayor and council for your leadership and your vision on the I-10 widening. That will mean a lot, not just for our project, but for all the other commercial development that will be occurring in the area. That's something that's really got to happen in order for this project and others to be successful over the long term. So, yeah, I would commend you for that. With this, with this infrastructure solution in place, we're able to now move toward our implementation phase of the project. And I heard one of the questions that came up earlier was regarded the timing of the project. We are looking to bring forward the power center as the first phase of the project and have that open in 2008. One of the, one of the questions that council were asked was regarding the timing and the difference between the 2008 timing and the 2009 timing that we're currently talking about. I guess one thing that I, that I should point out is that a lot of factors go into what would be an opening date for a, for a big project like this. First of which is that it's market-driven, and it's driven by not just decisions that West Core makes, but decisions that our major anchor tenants make, and decisions that a number of our retailers that go into the malls with us make for how and when they can open. Opening dates and completion dates for infrastructure and a lot of other factors go into that, but based on all of that, the regional mall portion of the project, first phase, we're planning for the 2009 timing rather than the 2008 timing. So that's where we are now, and again, a lot of factors go into making that decision. One thing I should point out, too, is that we have gotten great response from retailers so far, much earlier in the process than we normally do. As most of you know, we're under construction on a project, regional mall project over on the other side of the valley in the town of Gilbert that we're hoping to open toward the end of next year. We're getting a lot of interest from retailers that are moving into that project that say they want to, they want to go ahead and move straight to leases in Goodyear, which is a great sign. They're really responding well to the demographics and the growth that the city of Goodyear and the Southwest Valley are seeing. So I think we're very pleased and excited about, about what that portends for, for the project. Brian mentioned, too, that this is, the action tonight is regarding our development agreement, and it's really focused on this, this regional infrastructure solution that we worked so hard as a group to come up with. We will be back before the city council in the next few months with the regional center to discuss design guidelines and to discuss our final site plan approval with the, with the council. So there will be another opportunity. We'll be working with your staff and then with planning commission and then coming back to council within the next few months as we move toward implementation and development of the project. I'll just finish with reiterating how excited we are and to be working on the project here in Goodyear. Our team is ready to answer any questions we can about the project or the improvements that are becoming forward. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments from the applicant or West Core? Okay, opportunity for the public. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, saying none, then I'll ask if the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution 061074. A resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving a development agreement with West Core Goodyear LLC and Arizona Limited Liability Company for the commercial development on approximately 341 acres as part of a regional shopping center to be known as Estrella Falls, generally located between Pebble Creek Parkway and Bullard Avenue and between Virginia Avenue and Interstate 10 within the city of Goodyear and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion?
Motion to accept Resolution 061074 is read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Scott and a second from Councilmember Holla. Open for discussion. Councilmember Scott.
I have a couple of questions, but first of all, Brian, thank you and your staff for a lot of work that went into this project, obviously, as well as West Core. And the way it's presented, it sounds like a win-win type DA, but I've not been involved with one of these before. And I don't know if you have, Brian, but I'm sure that West Core has been involved with several of them, and that's one of my questions. The development agreement that we're talking about with regard to the infrastructure and the performance-driven type concept, is this the same as you've done with Kirland, Chandler, and other projects, or is this somehow unique to the Goodyear project?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Scott. It's not unique. We've, we've done similar agreements with other cities as we build projects in the market here. Chandler received a development agreement for infrastructure similar to this one. We've also worked out agreements in the past with, with other cities, including Arrowhead, Scottsdale Fashion Square, and many others. So it is not unique by any means.
That was question number one. Question number two is, somewhere in the very near future, we're going to have to make a decision, or the powers that be are going to have to make a decision, whether this is going to be an open or closed mall. This is a big concern to the constituents in this area. When do you think we're going to be able to make that decision?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Scott. That's, that's a decision that, number one, I'll tell you that we don't take lightly. I'll tell you that the decision for whether it's indoor or outdoor is not final decision yet. I mentioned earlier that the timing for the regional malls is based on a lot of factors. The, the way the project is built, whether it's indoor or outdoor, a lot of other factors is also, it's also based on other, other, other things. For example, the, the department store industry has contracted significantly. That sets out a certain way that a regional mall project could be built, depending on how many department store anchors could commit at any one given time, to be able to commit to an opening date and open at the same time, which would allow you to build enclosed space between them. I will also tell you that the, the outdoor centers as a trend nationally have been very successful, doing very well around the market. And our customers, who are the retailers, have done very well in outdoor settings. So I guess that's, that's the answer, and yes, we will have to make a decision on that very soon. And I guess, to be honest with you, if you look at what we're building in the Southeast Valley right now in the town of Gilbert, it is an outdoor, more of a lifestyle center. We are, we are probably leaning that way for this project, but certainly, decision is not final. And what we will commit to you, like we do with all of our projects, that we will build a state-of-the-art project, whether it is enclosed or outdoor. If you've visited any of the centers that we have around the valley, Chandler Fashion Center is a great enclosed model, Biltmore Fashion Park is an, is an outdoor model, Kirland has another outdoor model. How you design and build those, whether it's enclosed or not, how you treat pedestrian amenities, shading, cooling, lighting, all those things are very important. And again, we commit to, as we do with all of our projects, bring forward state-of-the-art, best for the community.
The thing is, you don't need Fred Scott to give you this opinion, because I'm sure you thought of it, but when you start talking about variables for various areas, it's hard to compare one to another. For example, Kirland, Kirland or Biltmore, if the folks don't want to shop there because it's a little bit too hot for them, they trot on down the street where you have a closed mall. We're not going to have that opportunity here. This is going to be our mall. And if we have intolerable days temperature-wise, there's just not going to be any, any use of the mall. That's just my opinion. I'm sure you thought of this. So, you know, I think Kirland's a beautiful mall, but if it's too hot to go shopping during the day down the street to, to another mall, that's, that's pretty simple. And the same thing with Biltmore.
We've, we've actually taken, sorry? Mayor, Councilmember Scott. We've actually taken a look at two projects that are in the same demographic areas, sort of the same market, Kirland Commons, and compared that to sales at Scottsdale Fashion Square. Again, they're relatively in the same trade area, relatively the same number of tourists would shop at either, either of those two centers, so it's a pretty good apples-to-apples comparison. We've, we've identified that in the summer months, there is a dip in Kirland Commons, but it is more than made up during the cooler months of the year, during the remainder of the year. During just in the summer months, there's a, there's a roughly a $4.50 per square foot drop in sales comparatively speaking, but in the other months, Kirland outperformed by more than $9 a square foot the Scottsdale Fashion Square. I would also point out that our two highest in the market per square foot sales are at Kirland and Biltmore, again, both of which are outdoor, outdoor centers. So we, we believe that we definitely take that into consideration, and we, again, we would not be moving forward with a, with an outdoor project in Gilbert. We wouldn't be moving forward We wouldn't be moving forward, have moved forward with an outdoor project in Tucson, Atlantic Tana, if we didn't believe that they could be successful, and successful in the summer months.
Thank you.
Councilmember Susan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was concerned, as Councilman Scott is, about the indoor-outdoor approach. We've had that trial here in a smaller mall, and of course, we're talking about a smaller mall where a transition could be made. We're talking about a very large regional mall, okay, with your project. I don't know where you're getting your information from, that indoor versus outdoor mall is concerned, but what I'm hearing from my constituency is that they're favoring an indoor mall. Now, I would hope that before you make a giant step in the wrong direction, that you do conduct a survey of some sort to determine what the attitudes of the shopping public in this region is before you make a decision that you may not be able to turn back on. And that's my concern. I know that I have relatives that are down in Yuma who say that the shopping center that you have down there doesn't do too well in the summer months. And frankly, you know, with the type of temperatures we've been having here in the Phoenix metropolitan area this year, the temperatures are comparable to what they have in Yuma. And of course, their base, their shopping base naturally is going to be better in the winter months, because that's when they're getting the snowbirds that are coming in there by the hundreds of thousands. So I hope that before you get involved into this type of project, you take us into consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
My concern, if I may, go back to the, what I'm reading here for these costs, what we will generate, the $380 million that we'll be generating on this over a period of 2008 When you talk about this, when you talk about building this in phases, when you built, like, how long from the beginning of Phase 1 to the completion of this entire project will there be? Because that will affect the number of shoppers that come into the area also. And will we be generating enough tax money over that period of time until you get that thing finished? And what's the guarantee that we have that finished and we've paid out all this amount of money, which you have too? But what kind of a, is there any guarantee here? I'm concerned about that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cavalier, I guess the first comment I would make to that is that, believe me, there's no one more motivated to deliver a great project that will generate a lot of sales tax than we are. Both from the idea that it would help pay off all of this infrastructure that needs to be built, but also just for us to be a successful company. To open and operate a successful entity, you've got to have a critical mass of square footage. That's what we've talked about from the beginning, that this would be a super-regional destination with a combination of department stores, entertainment, restaurant, fashion, destination shopping across the board. So we definitely believe that we can and will deliver this, or we certainly wouldn't be moving forward on the timing and the schedule with the project that we've talked about.
And the Chandler mall, is that, how long has that taken?
Yes, to give you an example, these regional mall projects, as they come forward, and again, just using Westcore as an example, we're talking about for this project over 300 acres. That includes the 100-acre regional mall, and then Power Center, and then other retail commercial hotel development. Chandler was about 200 acres, if I'm not mistaken. It is still not completely built out, and it's been five years. And I say that it's still not built out. Chandler has probably built out faster than most projects have, just because the demographics of that area were ripe and ripe for that regional mall development. Other projects to look at would be similar to, say, Arrowhead, where it's, Arrowhead has taken probably, I don't know, eight to 10 to 12 years to fully build out. I think as a, when you look at a 200 to 300-acre project, I think that, and again, as those numbers bear out, you're looking at probably, it could be a five-to-10-year build-out for all of the square footage. That's not necessarily a bad thing, because as new, as the industry does change and new entrants come into the market, you'll be bringing new projects and new square footage online and be able to respond to that.
Because my concern is, are we making this estimate of 384 million based on the thing being built out, or as it goes through these phases?
My name's David Scholl. I'm with Westcore also. My address is 11411 North Tatum. I want to go back and answer your first question, see if I can do a, make it a little clearer. Typically, 300-acre regional mall, probably built out over about a decade. You would expect that about 10 years after groundbreaking of the first phase, you're going to see 90% or more of the space built out. That would track with most of our past regional malls. I would also point out that the way that Mr. Pennards and Rorick negotiated this agreement, you won't be paying any sales tax to us until the regional mall is fully complete in its, you know, first phase. So even if other projects are coming online first, you don't have to worry about paying any sales tax to us until the regional mall is delivered. I would also tell you that the projections that were used to come up with the numbers that you've seen here tonight, the 300 and some million over 25 years, were based on that type of build-up. So we were not showing collecting sales tax in early years, when in reality, it might not be built for five or 10. We were actually programming that land to come on over even more than 10 years to be especially conservative and make sure that everybody had the comfort that those sales taxes would come online in a reasonable amount of time.
And then I have one other question. Thank you very much, David, and I think we talked about this when we took our tour. I had some of this information given to you, but you talked about the quality of the private improvements, and you mentioned all these shopping centers of yours. Now, which one are we going to be like? Are we going to be more like Scottsdale Shopping, Scottsdale Fashion Center, or Kirland, or more like Arrowhead? I mean, there is a difference. I mean, and not to take away from anyone, I'm just saying, there is a difference. And how do you envision ours?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cavalier, I think that the language in the agreement was placed into the agreement to try to help give mayor and council comfort that we were going to bring forward a top-rate, first-quality regional project. We tried to identify that by giving some examples of centers that we felt met just that overall criteria. To pick one and say that it will be like that, I think would be doing it, would not be doing it justice, because it will be its own very special, very, very unique, with its own set of materials and finishes and amenities that'll make it special. It will be unlike any other project. Certainly, you'll be able to look at it and pick things out of other projects that have been successful, but it'll be its own unique individual project.
And we appreciate that, because we want to be unique, and we want to be good here. We don't want to be, no, Scottsdale, we don't want to be another Chandler, but we want the quality way up there. So the time constraints that takes to get this completed will help us to bring in these additional higher-quality realty, I'm sorry, higher-quality organizations or retail outlets that we don't have signed up now. So that evolves, is that what you're saying? And those people will think twice about coming here, maybe, like Nordstrom's and some of the people that we'd like to have here? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor Cavalier, we will bring forward as much of the project at a given point in time as the market is ready for. Again, I mentioned our first phase of the regional mall project. We want to bring forward a minimum of two anchors and a minimum of 300,000 square feet of shop space and restaurant space. We intend to do a lot more than that and hope that we build out much more quickly. But as Dave mentioned, in the projections that we provided, we tried to provide a conservative, realistic view for how they could build out over a period of time. Again, all top quality. That's definitely what we're.
That's what our residents want to hear, and I wanted you to say that. Thank you very much.
Well, let me go everybody first chance, everybody else.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I'm very excited about this. And reading the type of businesses you're already, retailers you're already planning on bringing in certainly says a high quality. And I agree, we want something very individual and unique for the West Valley. We're going to be the center for the West Valley for shopping. I think it'll far surpass Arrowhead, so I think people will be driving from that direction to our mall. So I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tonnyak?
Question, do we look at property tax that's generated by the mall? Or did we look at that at all, so we don't have a figure? We do generate property tax, though, as well, beyond the sales tax.
Mayor, Councilmember.
Make the assumption we do.
Absolutely, yes.
All right. You know, I think you've shown us a very, from my perspective, very robust development agreement, and something that I know the screws have been put in both directions, from both parties, to each other as it relates to the development agreement. And you all have had some pretty vibrant and very fruitful conversations that hopefully will result in what is decades of success for you and for us in the city of Goodyear. One question I keep asking myself, because I think it's important to put this into a perspective as we're discussing this, and I'll ask this question, whether or not you can give an honest answer, is yet to be seen, but total capital investment by Westcore over that decade? What do you, or ancillary, I should say, not just Westcore, but total capital investment in that 300 acres, what would you anticipate? Do you even put a ballpark to that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tonnyak, one of the things that I've learned in my relatively short time at Westcore is that when we start throwing out numbers like that, as a public company, our CFO tends to get very nervous, and I wonder if my boss got nervous back there at the same time.
You haven't seen him moving, Deck, though.
I will defer that question to David.
Let me ask it, and maybe, Dave, maybe another way to ask this is total capital investment thus far that is public, say, at Chandler or at Scottsdale?
Well, let's just do some math out loud, if you don't mind. Most of the building costs today are going to, the way they've been rising, 300 acres will easily yield 3 million feet. At $200 or $300 a foot to build all that space, you're approaching 3/4 of a billion dollars over the next 10 years. They'll probably be invested, not all by us. Department stores will build their own buildings, theaters will build their own buildings. But in this day and age, it's tough to build anything with the type of quality that we're aiming for here, with including the tenant build-out of their space, it's going to be anything less than $300 a foot.
Gives a good, I think that gives a good frame of reference to the discussion, as we're going through this, and I think it's something that's often not discussed. It's always, the headline is always how much the city's giving away versus what actual investment is occurring in our community. And so I think it is important for us to realize that. You know, I think you've hashed out something that, again, is very beneficial to us in the city of Goodyear. I look forward to the fruits of your labor. I'm not going to question indoor/outdoor, what have you. You have all your ICSC stuff you look at. You, obviously, if you're going to invest 3/4 of a billion dollars over a decade in any one place, you're not going to take any decision lightly as it results to that, or as it relates to that, pardon me. But, you know, I would say that it's incumbent upon us, for us as leaders in the city, to be able to explain your actions and explain our actions and/or support or lack of support for any specific direction. But I think it's also incumbent upon you, if you're going to do something such as an outdoor environment, that it is, as you mentioned, very pedestrian-friendly. Studies have shown that a plethora of trees and foliage can reduce temperatures 8 to 15 degrees. People have lived in this environment before there was air conditioning, will live in it after there's air conditioning. Some of us pleasantly, some of us not so pleasantly, depending on the time of the year. But we've got nine months of the year here that is very, very nice, and that often gets lost in the debate between the indoor and the outdoor argument. So that's it. I'll rest there. Go ahead and make comments.
I just need to clarify, because I recognize some people in the audience, that I said earlier, and we are a public company, we will not be investing all 3/4 of a billion dollars.
Right.
Councilmember Holler?
We hear that old saying about build it and they will come. So I'm not, whether it's indoor or outdoor, you know, I just think that you put it there, we're going to have a lot of folks coming in, and the money is important to our city, of course, but I'm really looking forward to having a quality project like this within the city of Goodyear. I think we're very excited about it, and the presentations were very good. Thank you, Brian. So good.
Councilmember Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. David, can I ask you to wear out your shoes a little bit more? Just want to make sure, what I interpreted you were saying about the reimbursement, the sales tax reimbursement. There are really basically five phases of this mall construction that will be going on between 2008 to 2018. The Power Center Phase 1 will begin on, project completion will be terminated as of the April 2008. Power Center Phase 2, April 2010. Power Center 3, April 2011, 2012. And Mall Phase 1, April, between April and October 2009, and Mall and future phases between 2010 to 2018. If we were to build the Power Center 1, 2, and 3, are you going to expect reimbursement, sales tax reimbursement from those entities?
Those entities would be part of that package that goes to support the regional infrastructure.
Twenty-five thousand, 25 million.
But none of it going towards the infrastructure for the mall.
Okay.
And I would also point out that all of those dates, we have to put dates in there so the people can run numbers and so the great presentations can be made to set everybody on the same page. But we also want to make sure that we under-promise and over-deliver, and I think that those are very conservative dates and that we're expecting that the Power Center probably could happen much quicker than over a four or five-year period. So I just want everybody to keep in mind that those are conservative numbers so that all of us could get comfortable with all the projections that were going on. But to answer your question specifically, none of the mall-specific infrastructure would be reimbursed if only the Power Center were built.
So if the mall really wasn't completed until the end of 2018, are you telling me that you're not expecting any reimbursement, sales tax reimbursement from the city of that time?
No, there is a minimum threshold required for the sales tax.
Okay, what is that?
That's what Garrett mentioned earlier, the two anchor tenants and the 300,000-feet shops. It gets us really the establishment of super-regional destination, and as we can bring some of those other department stores along later, we think we can probably add 100,000 feet or more of shops with those other department stores, Scott. So we want to hit a threshold to make sure that you get the establishment of that super-regional destination, and then with 105 acres, we ought to be able to develop, you know, a million-one, million-two feet in that site eventually.
I didn't, just wanted you to be saddled with the completion statement.
No, I'm comfortable with the agreement. There was a question asked earlier tonight, if this is different than the other agreements. I guess I would point out, there is one sense that it's different than the other agreements we've been at. There is so much infrastructure that has to be built in this area, so much more than we're used to, and it has to get started so much earlier than we're used to starting, that I am usually in a position where I am hopefully wowing a council with some incredible final plans of the mall at the same time that we're negotiating development agreements, and there, I feel unarmed tonight. I would much rather be here showing you and knocking your socks off with an incredible destination. I take a great deal of risk, because you're still going to have to approve it, and I'm already going to be starting infrastructure. So I think the risk lies with me, but I feel, I feel bad that... So I think the risk lies with me, but I feel, I feel bad that tonight can't be more of the typical celebratory night where you're extremely excited about what we're going to be delivering, and we're excited about the partnership that we've formed with each other.
Well, let me clarify on point. I don't think there's any one person on this council that is not for this mall.
Right, I understand.
You understand? I hope you understand that anyway, because we're excited about you coming.
I do, but we love to put our best foot forward and show the things that we're proud to break ground on at the same time that we're having any negotiations like this. This one just requires almost a year, well, six months to a year in advance because of just the scope itself, so much infrastructure that has to be built.
The only concerns we have are the ones that have been expressed this evening.
Right, right.
They're minor, really.
And those have been consistent, that to some degree, I'm excited tonight that the same ones that you're wrestling with are the ones we're wrestling with, and nothing new's come up. I think that means there's been a lot of good study and investigation and focus groups that have already occurred and given us good information.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Yeah, just, Dave, you pointed out an interesting point about lack of excitement, or maybe, you know, it's not illuminating the room this evening, but I'll tell you, Goodyear should be excited tonight because we put you in that position of stepping out way in front. And that's capital investment that this council and this management and our citizens haven't had to put forth as of yet. You're taking that burden and you're taking that risk. And so that is very much exciting, and I think that goes to the spirit of all of us, well, I can't speak for all of us, but I can speak for myself, of my comfort level with not necessarily seeing the picture of the fruit that's going to be produced over the next several years.
Well, I appreciate that, and thank you. I think the point I'd really like to make is, we're excited, we've been working on this for a year with your staff, we're excited about it. It's just that we're paid to build exciting shopping destinations. Infrastructure just doesn't quite do it for us, and we're excited. We're excited to get back in front of you in the next six or eight months and have some more exciting things to talk about.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I have a question for our fire chief. We have a police presence here in the mall. Are you comfortable with response times or first-aid calls? I guess it'll come from Pebble Creek. Is that going to be your closest, closest facility?
Should be okay.
Especially if it's an open mall.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Scott, with the completion of Station 5, that'll be our closest mall. And at this point, we're pretty comfortable with it. The idea that it's a open-air mall versus a closed mall from our contacts with the other municipal fire departments serving, serving these malls, we don't have any indication that that'll have a bearing on call volume. However, having a mall will have a bearing on call volume. With respect to response time, we are working with the police department, we've identified an additional site that if, as the area builds out, we'll be able to potentially put in medical response to augment what's available for the mall response. And we'll let that play out, let the development occur, and then let that influence our planning.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask a few questions here if I could. The term used here is reimbursable and reimbursement, and it's used throughout this package, and I think we understand that. But are the newspapers and is Senator Chevron and others in legislature, are they going to use that word, or are they going to use incentive? You're asking whether they're going to use the word reimbursement, if they're going to use the word incentive? I guarantee you there are going to be circumstances in which they're going to use the word incentive. I guess is, would be the most honest answer I can give you. However, I would also point out, and I have done a number of these agreements, I did the Arrowhead Mall agreement, I've done a number of these around the valley and a few around the state. One thing that does separate this agreement from a lot of the other agreements is the amount of infrastructure. Arrowhead Mall was, even in those dollars, was a mere fraction of the infrastructure required here. You didn't have Bullard Wash going down to the middle of those kind of regional improvements. Bell Road got very large, of course, there were some improvement districts there, regional storm drainage, some streetlights and so forth. One bridge over one small wash, I mean, compared to the amount of infrastructure here and the direct high end to Interstate 10 on both of your north-south arterials, there's no comparison to the infrastructure that I've seen in a number of these other agreements. So you're probably going to hear that term. I'd be lying to you if I told you you weren't going to hear that term, but, and there are certainly economic development benefits that the city is going to get from this agreement that would certainly justify an incentive agreement. And we've gone through that process, we've done the nose of a tent, there was the financial analyst that has to be independent, and it was selected independently and verified it. The other thing I will note is, I've looked a lot of economic projection studies for economic development agreements over the years, and this is tied directly only to the sales taxes from the project, and in that one case, the additional project area. It is not instruction sales tax, it's not property taxes, it's not property taxes to school districts. I've seen all kinds of things thrown in the hat to try and justify an incentive agreement. Okay? It's not indirect economic benefits where you figure that somebody who's employed there will come back to your town and spend that money again.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I think the number, actually, we're approaching $100 million on this reimbursement. And we're going to be reading about this one, let me tell you. We're going to be reading about it real soon.
There is a potential.
And that's fine.
It's also...
We just have to be ready to answer those questions.
That's true. And you may be reading about that, but it's also backed up with almost $70 million with their improvement district assessments.
And that's important.
That is very important.
The, if you take the total area of Gilbert that's associated with their reimbursable and compare it to ours, is there reimburse, is there incentive or reimbursable within 2% to 5% of ours? We're talking about, are we, are we that close?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the town of Gilbert, they actually floated public municipal bonds, and they built all of the off-site infrastructure themselves. We don't have any, any sort of reimbursement agreement with the town of Gilbert. We're building everything from backup curb into our site, and none of the public improvements. They built all the streets through a bond issuance.
And you aren't doing any reimbursables at all then?
Not in the town of Gilbert. No, sir.
Thank you. I think we, as a council, need to know more about that park. I mean, not tonight, but you're talking about 30 acres. We're paying, I figured about 135,000 an acre for a wash, basically. And this is larger than our park. So it's important that we know, we be a part of that design for that park, the Bullard Wash park.
Mr. Mayor, absolutely. Right now, we're working on some different concepts. We're working with Lily and Schuett. Mrs. Schuett is, is looking at some of the design elements that we might be able to include in there, to include artwork. We're looking at the bridges very closely on Virginia Avenue and McDowell, how we can make those be something pretty spectacular. So we're looking at a variety of things, and we will be bringing that back before council in a work session to talk about the improvements that we're looking at doing.
While you're up there, Brian, if you, why do we want a community room?
Mr. Mayor, a community room is typical of a lot of malls. I can ask Mr. Shoal to address what they've done in other malls, but a community room is a area where, where people can gather, and it usually works out real well in malls. We've seen it at Arrowhead, we looked at other mall agreements, and they've included a public gathering.
What do they do there, I guess? I mean, we're going to have a city center two miles away.
Let me let Mr. Shoal address that.
Some cities have asked, some have not been interested. In most instances where we've committed to build a community room, it ends up being a room available to community groups to meet in. People that are looking, whether it's, you know, something like a fraternal organization or charitable organization, we like to build them near our food service areas so they can be catered. It's almost like a banquet-type room that can be used for meetings. Most of the communities where we put them in, they're overbooked. There are all kinds of groups always looking for places that they can meet, and it's nice to have some of the parking and food service available as well.
Okay, thank you. I want to talk about half-road improvements and impact fees and how that correlates to this subject, but before I do that, I just want to emphasize that I was really turned off by this one paragraph on quality of private improvements. It's, I don't know what page number, I don't know the page number of this. It's the third page of this. And it says, "The regional shopping mall is to be comparable to the quality of Chandler Fashion Center, Kirland Commons, Scottsdale Fashion Center, or Arrowhead Town Center. It's to be enclosed or open entirely at the developer's sole and absolute discretion." And then this one. "It contains a mix of first-quality national or regional major tenants such as Dillard's, Macy's, Bloomingdale's, Sears, JCPenney, or Nordstrom." It's just the, just the "or" is sort of like taking us for granted, I think. There's no comparison between some of those retailers, and there's little comparison in some of those malls. I just don't like it that we're being, you're directing that to us like it's not a big deal, you'll get somebody, and it could be JCPenney, well, it won't be because we already have them. It could be Sears, or it could be Nordstrom. You know, it just...
Mr. Mayor, let me address that from a legal standpoint, and let Westcor address it from a market standpoint.
Let me go on through other things, because there's nothing we're going to change on that. It just, it just seems to take us for granted, that's the way I see it. And are we not going to reimburse Tang or Grace? Is that out of the question?
Mr. Mayor, no. There are no development agreements that are going to be tied to reimbursements for Mr. Tang or Mr. Grace or Evergreen Devco.
And, and they aren't going to be asking for it, or do you know?
They have not asked, and we don't contemplate it at this time.
Vestar, about 800,000 square feet, what's our, I don't think it's a reimbursable, it's sort of an incentive because of their living life center, score, life center. That was $4 to $8 million for, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. I believe it was around $4.4 million tied strictly to infrastructure, but the trigger on that was to the Lifestyle Center.
Yeah, but this is 20 times that.
This is a very significant infrastructure area. It's mind-boggling.
20 times?
It's, the lanes of road, the widths of the road, Bullard Wash, Bullard Wash itself, we have $23 million in Bullard Wash to include the two bridges. So that's, that's a significant part of that, building it all the way up to Interstate 10. It's, it's more infrastructure in one small area than, than we've done in the history of this city. So it's, as we talked about, it's very comprehensive. And we didn't think it would start out that. Working closely with Wood Patel, our initial estimates were substantially below that. And then as we kept defining the scope and then really trying to settle in on what the improvement district is, we have to come up with a maximum amount on that, and that will come before the council. But the, the costs have gone up over time, and they've also done cost comparisons with an improvement district that was done over in Queen Creek as well, too. And if you do have any specific questions about costs, I do have our engineer here that could certainly talk to that as far as where we started and where we're at now.
I'm thinking, do you want to hear that? I'm really concerned about this $100 million reimbursement. And I guess we have to depend on the engineer for the correct data. I just, I just wonder about the validity of all those statistics. And you can tell me anything you want, but that doesn't mean they're valid, so to speak. You agree? You don't know for sure.
Mr. Mayor, their estimates right now, when we actually go through the improvement district, the actual assessments will be based on, on what the actual bid amounts are. So these are estimates we're using going forward until we go to bid.
If we, if we were fortunate and Nordstrom in a couple of years, five years, wants to come here, they're going to want money. $30, $40 million, is that reasonable?
Mr. Mayor, we have, we have not been working actively with Nordstrom's on development agreement, but in previous development agreements with Scottsdale Fashion Square and certainly in Chandler, they have required that. But we do have experts here that have actually worked on those agreements, and they might be able to add some detail to that. But they will ask for...
I just wonder if we're going to have, we're going to have the capability to incentivize them if, in fact, they, they're interested in coming here because of the cost we're putting forward into this, maybe Major League Baseball or city center. I'm really worried about our overall financial capability, and it would be a tragedy if we had a Nordstrom wanting to come and we're unable to provide the incentive for them to come. The, you know, the, we're being asked to agree to a development agreement with $300 amount of money. I think it's probably as high as it gets in the valley, isn't it true? Have there been higher ones in this? I don't know.
I think as far as total dollar amount goes, if you start figuring in incentives for particular retailers and you start figuring in some much less favorable interest provisions than what we've been able to negotiate here, I think the dollar effect of some of the other agreements are higher, if not the upfront cost dollars may not be. What you don't have there, we keep coming back to, is you don't have the level of infrastructure being built there, and this is tied to these numbers or actual costs. So if they're less than, than those numbers, then that, it truly is a reimbursement in that regard, other than the tenant.
Yeah, and we really have to emphasize that, I guess. But here we are, asked, being asked to come forward with this development agreement, and I guess Harkins is one of the anchors, is that correct?
They would qualify if they added these 12 screens.
Yeah, so really, we're talking about moving ahead with one department store anchor.
You could have at a minimum a department store, a minimum of a 12-screen cinema, movie cinema box, and 300,000 square feet of retail, so a minimum 500,000 square feet. That's the trigger.
Yeah, I know, and I just, it just seems like it's sort of a ready-fire rain proposal here because we, we aren't going to have a regional mall with one department store, right? So...
No, and again, I think the reason that it is set out the way that it's set out is that we are so far ahead of when those marketing efforts normally would have been made and those tenants signing up, because the infrastructure has to get out of the ground. So I think that's why it's, it has to be written that way.
The, so I guess, Brian, what, you know, we normally, with our developers, we have them pay the half-street improvements, and then we'll refund or reimburse them through reimbursables on the impact fees, right? We're doing it differently here. But there's a similarity still.
Yes.
They're doing the roadways and reimbursing them through sales tax receipts.
Yes.
And the impact fees, we're locking in the impact fee at the current rate, even though it could double or triple in the next couple of years.
Mr. Mayor, clarification on the development fee. It's only for that 100-acre regional mall portion, and they would actually be paying the prevailing fee at time that they pull the building permit.
But they get the money back.
But they get, reimburse the differential, yes.
Okay, so, but we aren't going to do that with anyone else. Are we setting a bad example by, you know, for other commercials that will, will reimburse you the differential between today's impact fee and what it's going to be a couple of years from now?
Mr. Mayor, we had a lot of discussion with our negotiation team on this very subject, and it is, it was difficult for the developer, they can certainly talk to this as well, for them to run pro formas based on unknowns with our maximum supportable being at potentially $12 square foot. So concerns as far as what impact that would have to the cost of the mall. And we know that the mall is a trigger, so we have not done a reimbursement for development fees in quite some time. And the challenge is, it's an unknown right now. It's an unknown for them to be able to run the pro forma and to determine how best to go forward, and would it delay if it's an extra $10 or $12 million to develop?
I just think it's setting a bad example, and others are going to want the same thing. If we lock in, what you're doing is locking in a current impact fee rate.
Only on somebody who's bringing a regional mall. On the other 200 acres, it's not locked in at all. It's not reimbursed at all.
I know. I understand that.
So the other 200 acres is perhaps more comparable to... So the other 200 acres is perhaps more comparable to what you've done in some other development agreements, uh, like we did in the Vestar agreement. Um, would be more comparable to what the other 200 acres of this development are, and they have to pay prevailing impact fees with no reimbursement on that, even under this agreement.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I, I don't know that developers along Estrella Park are going to agree with that rationale, but, uh, in fact, I don't think they will. But, uh, I guess, uh, my bottom line is, do we want West Core and Town, absolutely? Do we want a regional mall, yes? But I think this is, this price is too high, and, uh, I, I'm probably alone on this one. I'm certainly not ready to approve this development agreement. It's asking too much of us financially, I think, particularly in view of what we want to do in the next couple of years in Goodyear.
Mr. Mayor, if I could respond to a couple of the comments that, uh, questions that you'd asked, if you don't mind. On the, the magnitude of the, of the improvement district, um, again, there's no one more interested in that number being lower than, than West Core is. Um, the, the improvements are what this entire group collectively came together with the city, with the city staff, to determine, these are the improvements that need to be built out. And it's not just for the, uh, for the West Core Regional Mall, but it's, it's for the 300 acres around the mall, it's for, uh, other properties in the area to benefit too, to benefit the whole city. If, if that number, uh, engineer's estimate would be significantly lower, we would be, obviously, we'd be very pleased as well. The, the, um, uh, initial outlay would not be nearly as high, uh, the amount of time to pay back would not be nearly as high, risk for us would not be nearly as high either. So I would, I would definitely, uh, I would definitely point that out, too. Uh, we're certainly sharing some risk, I guess, in that, that the numbers are very high. It's the scope of the project that's driving that.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready to vote? All right. Okay, we've had a motion, a second, discussed it, uh, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Pass 6-1.
We had a good time to break. Want a break?
Thank you. Thank you.
For a Panda Express drive-through.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a use permit request for Panda Express Restaurants with a drive-through facility. On the screen should be an arrow here shortly showing.
I can't hear you. Yeah, some sound.
Yeah, sounds. It's on now.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this is the location of the Panda Express Restaurant within Canyon Trails Plaza, which is located just north of the existing Safeway Center within Canyon Trails. Cross Streets are Australia Parkway and Van Buren Street. The center is located at the northwest corner. This center is located about quarter-mile north. This is the site plan for the Canyon Trails Plaza Two site. Site is currently undeveloped, but this is the approved site plan for the center. The parcel highlighted in yellow, that's pad three, that's the parcel proposed for the Panda Express Restaurant. Submitted with the use permit request were conceptual building elevations. This is a proposal put forth by the applicant. Formal review of the building elevations will occur with the site plan. At that time, staff will be looking for conformance with the architectural style, the building materials and colors established for the center. And this is the proposed site plan for the Panda Express. As you can see on the screen, customers or their vehicles will enter from the south into the drive-through lane. They'll have preview and order boards. They'll make that turn around the north side of the building, pick up their order, and then exit to the west. Again, I should point out the location of the menu and preview boards are located right here. And zooming out a bit, Australia Parkway is here to the bottom of the page. That will be an issue come later in the staff report and this presentation. The recommendation from staff is for denial. Two reasons that this request is denial from staff. The first one is that the menu boards will face Australia Parkway. Our sign code calls that the fronts of menu boards shall not face the public street. In this instance, we have this situation. Another reason is our design guidelines and policies for commercial and especially for convenience uses, drive-through uses. We call for the building to be the major presence along the street. Parking, drive-through aisles, those are secondary. The focal should be the building. In this case, we have parking, and more importantly, we have a drive-through lane facing Australia Parkway and a drive aisle. We have instances where we'll have stacked cars being the focal point to this site versus building facade. This exhibit, while not fairly viewable on the screen, was provided in the packet. Basically, this exhibit was just included to show we have several drive-through type uses along Australia Parkway, some existing, some proposed. And as you can see, some of, most of those drive-through uses, we're able to configure the stacking lanes predominantly to the rear or to the sides. Again, the staff recommendation is denial. However, you'll notice in the staff report, we do offer nine stipulations should council deem to approve this recommendation. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to leave my staff appointment available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the applicant.
My name is Tian Ho, and I'm with Panda Express, 1683 Walnut Grove, Rosemeat, California. I'm here with Mark Russell, also with Panda Express. Mr. Mayor, member of the city council, thanks for this opportunity to speak before you today regarding our Panda Express project on Van Buren and Australia Parkway. On behalf of Panda Express, we're asking you today to consider our appeal for a use permit that will permit the layout of our site to accommodate a drive-through that will face Australia Parkway. While we respect the recommendation of P&amp;Z and staff, we're asking you to evaluate our appeal based on several factors. One, as you can see, as you can see from the different layouts that we've proposed, we've worked diligently with staff to accommodate their recommendations. However, due to the restrictions that were put on us by the original site plan approval granted to the developer, we were limited on our options. We've been asked to turn our building around so that the drive-through can be in the back of the building. However, the developer-approved site plan does not allow for us to do that in the first place. Nonetheless, as you can see from the past layouts, turning our building around would pose other concerns that would affect the overall parking for the pad, and more importantly, the safety of our customers. At this time, I would like to have Mark to show the different versions of the layouts that we've gone through. As you can see right here, we've gone through three different layouts, and at each time of the layout, first of all, the original site plan will not allow us to turn the building around. And more importantly, at each level of the various layout, there's issues with parking, there's issues where, especially with the drive-through, that our customers will have to walk through the drive-through to get to the front of the building. Our main opposition to our layout is that the drive-through and menu board faces Australia Parkway. However, the ordinance states that the convenience use subject to the provision of the article may be located north of Van Buren, not closer than 75 feet from Australia Parkway, and most importantly, not substantially visible from Australia Parkway. As proposed, our drive-through lane is 113 feet from Australia Parkway, and with our proposed wall, the drive-through will not be visible from Australia Parkway from any directions. We feel that our proposal can satisfy the true spirit of the ordinance, which we're looking at right now. This has been a long process for us, having started back in November of last year. While we'd rather not go through this at all, it really is our last option because of the circumstances that has been put upon us. We're sincerely excited about being a part of Goodyear, and believe that not only will we add to the fabric of Goodyear with our choice of food, but by sharing with the citizens of Goodyear our mission of delivering exceptional Asian dining experience by building an organization where people are inspired to better their lives. We hope that we've demonstrated our sincere intention and effort to follow the guidelines set before us by the city and the staff. We were asked to work with some special circumstances and feel that we've been true to the spirit of the ordinance. And with that, I move with any questions as well as Mark.
Okay, thank you. You stand by, please, or take a seat, but we'll have questions probably. Comments from the public? Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we go with option B, city council, which is to recommend approvals of the special use permit for Panda Express.
Would you clarify that, please?
Let me rephrase my motion. I would move that we approve the request for a special use permit to allow convenient use for Panda Express Restaurant with a drive-through on .5 acre parcel located within the Canyon Trails Plaza Phase Two Commercial Center generally located 1/4 mile north of the northwest corner of Australia Parkway and Van Buren Street in Canyon Trails, P&amp;E.
Okay, a motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Scott, and that is to approve the use permit.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Lord?
That was my motion.
Okay, I'd like to say something. Okay, Councilmember Antoniak.
Yeah, I think my rationale is, needs to be explained. You know, we're gonna, we struggle with this time and time again, and, well, not time and time again, but a variety of different circumstances that we've struggled with this. And I know I've talked, at least on this specific one, maybe not ad nauseam, but at length with staff. And to me, the applicant has truly attempted to meet the spirit of the request here, and that is that the words "shall not be visible from the public street" apply to their menu board. Yes, there should be a dominance of the building, but given a certain set of circumstances, and there likely is a dominance of the building from the street, but my eyes, the applicants made a pretty concerted effort to shield from view the drive-through. And the alternatives, you know, we sit up here and opine about traffic and what have you, but the alternatives to me actually looked less traffic-friendly, at least in my perspective, than this alternative that's in front of us, that the applicant wishes for us to approve. So while I respect staff's recommendation, I respect the planning zoning sentiment, I think there's, at times, there's special circumstances where applicants make a very concerted effort to meet the spirit. If we're going to make the argument that boards should just not be located, let's just state, rather than say "not visible from the street," so applicants are clear, the sign ordinance says "not visible from the street," correct? It doesn't state "not facing the street," and that's where I get, I have challenges, is that an applicant comes in, they look through a very set of circumstances, they go back and forth, and until we clarify the language on that, I think we're gonna keep running into this. Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. So, given that, if it's the desire of council, I think we should have that discussion. I think we talked about that the last time we faced this on another one, on El Pollo Loco. Let's have that discussion, let's say, you know, "shall not be facing the street," and let's make it very clear for applicants so that we don't get in between the arguments between property seller and the property buyer, which we very clearly will get into as we continue down this course.
As I recall, when we were approving the Safeway Shopping Center, there was quite an argument, council, with, they wanted the drive-through at the Bank of America in front, and we said no, we want it in the rear. We said we want all drive-throughs in the rear. We said we did not want this. Now, looking at what's happening here on this Parkway, and I discussed this with, we had, right now, we have the existing, there's an existing drive-through at that end of the shopping center now in existence. Now, the additional part of Safeway Shopping Center, my understanding is going to have two more drive-throughs right in a row, and then the Panda Express, and then further up, we will have another one. And I also want to relate what is in existence with the Wells Fargo Bank, which, by the way, is my bank. And it's the hardest bank to get in and out of, of any place in town. I've never seen anything like it, because it is just too difficult. It wasn't designed, that pad was not designed for a drive-through, yet it has a drive-through that's impossible. I certainly cannot support this drive-through, because it does not fit, I think, the character of what we want Australia Parkway to be. And we went through this, there was a lot of arguments about this in city council. When we did the Bank of Americas, how many of you were on council at that time? And we made and put that, changed that, put that drive-through in the back. So I feel that that has to be done here, too. This is going to work. If we're going to stay the course, we have to stay the course. We can't make exceptions.
Councilmember Lawrence?
First of all, I want to thank the applicants, because you certainly have tried, briefed us, you've done everything you can possibly do to try to make this work. Harvey, I have a question for you. Tell me about the Chick-fil-A, and how that's located on that piece of property that's on Dicert-McDowell. And when was that, when was that agreement?
Searching my memory chips here. They're a little rusty.
Because it is, it's an example of that, right? Because the building, the side faces on to the roadway, and the menu board is there.
That's correct.
And it does not have, it does not have the space to the street that this one has. Is that correct? There's not that many feet.
Mayor, councilmember Lord, that's correct. It doesn't have the separation distance on Chick-fil-A, and that was one that was approved. I'm having a hard time remembering when that was. I think it was the late, it was, it had to be late 90s, 98, 97.
The Chick-fil-A menu board was approved in the late 90s?
Late 90s, I think so. I don't, I'm just trying to remember.
That was built since I've been sitting in this house.
Early 2000?
It was 2003.
It was a time really, having a hard time. They're not working.
It was in 03, 04.
I'm trying to reach back. I can, I can research.
Been approved in the late 90s, but the design.
The only reason I bring that up is very similar to what problems we're sort of having in, looking at.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lord, Chick-fil-A is the poster child for this whole project, or the whole question of signage. And it was the council at that time, a council member that greatly influenced the balance of the council to rewrite the sign code to be what it is.
No, it wasn't me.
It's none of the members present, okay? So I think that, you know, at the end of the day, what Councilman Antoniak raises is probably a need for us to go back and look at that as a council and as a planning and zoning commission as to what the final product you want. But it was about the visibility to the street. There was substantial landscaping, ficus trees, a whole bunch of other things that ended up going in to hide it, and still, you know, we listen, in our informal setting outside of this, that they're still dissatisfied that it ever happened. And that discussion has come up, not with the Buffalo wings, but
It was the El Pollo Loco.
El Pollo Loco, just recently.
But you moved the crazy chicken across the street, so there's no problem.
Here's the juxtapose that I face when I look at these things, and the rationale that maybe I applied that maybe leads towards exception. Every night, when I drive home to my development, I look at a huge IMS sign from the backyards of my neighbors, and it's enormity as it faces Palm Valley, and yet, a sign that in good faith is screened and lower and, you know, doesn't cause wrecks at Dicert Road, and doesn't cause me to blink my eyes and jerk my head as I'm driving home every day. You know, it meets the needs and obligation, or not obligation, but meets the needs of, or the spirit of what I believe is trying to be achieved, which is, it's not visible from the street, it's not overly distracting, and I don't, you know, and it's pleasing, the setting is pleasing to the eye. And to me, this attempts to achieve that, given the restrictions that are in play with this particular business, on a case-by-case basis.
No, I'll wait, go ahead.
Councilmember Hall?
To the staff, I noticed that, when I looked through the stipulations, there was, we had talked about the "could be subject to speaker noise," but I didn't see any stipulation on that particular thing. Was there nothing decided about that? Right, right. A future residence, future developments that would be moving in? End businesses, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we did have, that was one of the concerns with having the menu boards, who you do have the speaker box there. We didn't add a stipulation in this case. From what we reviewed it, that was more of a, maybe not even a, it was a concern, but the main concern is, is the aesthetics, that this was not a primary concern. We didn't feel a need for stipulation at this point. I'm sorry, sir. But we didn't feel the need for stipulation. That was a concern, but not the main concern. The main concern is mostly the aesthetics.
How it looks.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think we have to change an ordinance every time we make an exception to one. I look at this project here, and I did meet with these people prior to this. This is a nice-looking building. You do not see the order menu from the street, I don't believe. Is that not correct? You've got a wall up there that's a barrier as far as the through-traffic is concerned. I just don't see a problem with this project, and I'm gonna vote to support it. I just, am I required, Mayor, to reveal the name of my bank before I go any further?
I don't know, you guys are all bankers. Okay. Councilmember Susan? Did you make that trip out to Gilbert to review this?
Yes, sir, I was one of several staff members, yes, sir.
The building that we're showing here in this display, is it identical to the one that you viewed in Gilbert, at the Santan Village?
Mr. Mayor, council members, this building is different. Each center has its own unique architectural style and colors and materials.
The construction of it, basically the same, the architectural style?
Similar, it is a, this is probably a little over 2,400 square feet, according to Panda representatives, they don't really deviate too much from their prototype. Exterior-wise, it does look different, and maybe that one has some features that we might like when we review this elevation, when we come to site plan review, but it's basically the same.
What would be your objection about putting the sign here? I don't understand what your objection is about it.
It actually doesn't work.
Why wouldn't it work?
Sorry, you'll have to build a mic.
The picture you're looking at, and the one I built there in Gilbert, just to give you an idea, I built two in Gilbert in the last year. One, the menu boards are out in the street, one, they're in the back. It's depending on the layout and what we are given by the developers as far as to be able to lay it out and make the drive-through work. Our building, we actually, if you've ever been inside a Panda, we actually have, we're not able just to flip-flop and mirror a building. We're cut diagonally, so it really takes 50% of our mirroring the building away from us. Over there, at the one at Santan, the property actually fronts Market Street, and it actually, the front of the building actually can be there. And then the drive-through goes around on this side. As you'll see, we've tried to do that in the three drawings we did. The only problem is, given the width of the property and the way the parking is already set up in the, in the center, we weren't able to get the drive-through on the right side of the building. To make it clear and known, Panda, we do not like to have the drive-through coming through the front of our building either. Sometimes, it's just, that's the only way we'd lay out in this situation. There was no other opportunities to flip the building, go look for other properties, do other things that other users have been able to do in this area.
I just wanted to add that our appeal to council today is really our, I mean, it's our last chance, being that we'd rather not have gone through this process at all and be able to take the recommendation of staff. We truly, really would. I mean, it's been a process since last November. I mean, obviously, everybody knows that it's a lot of money. So we would rather not have gone through this process at all, but where, from where we stand, we really did not have any other choice but to go with this site. We even, with Harvey, also mentioned that he would see if he can speak to the developer on our behalf, and we tried. What we wanted to come to here today is to really illustrate the effort that we put in to try to accommodate staff's recommendation. But unfortunately, due to the layout of our, inside of our store, and the stipulations put on this pad, we were unable to do so.
Okay, thank you.
But in this particular instance, you're not only going against staff's recommendation, but you're also going against P&amp;Z. So there's two organizations in the city that don't see this fitting into this site here. And as I told you over the phone, this is one of the things that concerns me, that you really ought to be looking at additional property, that we can accommodate what you want in the city of Goodyear.
Yeah, it's not, it's not our intent to go against that. Quite frankly, we really respect the decision, and as Mark mentioned to you, we would rather not have our drive-through in front of our building. But the issue here is the threshold of visibility, and because of that, we feel that we've really worked in the spirit of the ordinance and not, you know, to build our site that way. So we're not disrespecting the recommendation. It's not truly a challenge to that, but really a challenge to what other options do we have at this point, given what we've tried to do.
Other comment?
I'm gonna further explain where I'm going on this, because, going back to the bank, and that bank is what I suggested to you, and I know you'd have to walk through the drive-through if you put that over on the other side, on that other illustration that you had. You didn't want the parking to be on the other side of the drive-through. Well, the bank is that way, and that's the way they had to do it to make theirs work. And they put the drive-through in the back, and had the, which one has the parking? That one, the first one, I believe, right?
The closest one, Vice Mayor, is actually, was his Plan Three. And as we've discussed in the past, if you can look here, we would actually be creating a worse situation than your bank. And, but what I'm saying is, this was the only one that we could come up with that actually would meet the required criteria of staff, meet the criteria of the P&amp;Z, but you can see, it would just not work as far as creating a headache traffic area in the back, and you'd be getting complaints all day long that, why did we approve this where people have to actually pull U-turns into our, into our center? Looking at that, as like you said, in the spirit, I mean, we'd rather look at something that may have, you know, that we've attempted to do that may not meet all your criteria, but will be a better situation for the public as far as traffic flow, safety, and everything, versus creating issues where we have a traffic problem in the back, parking issues, where all we have now is a, realistically, a visual problem, because according to staff, we could actually put the drive-through boards on the side of the building where El Pollo Locos put them, McDonald's put them, they're still visible from the street. We could just move them to the west side, I mean, to the north side of the building. That would, again, create a shorter stack, more problems. I mean, we've gone through every scenario we have that we could possibly do, and that's why we're here tonight, saying, this is the one that we've worked with so many people with staff, saying that this one, this one, I understand your distaste of all the drive-throughs, but this one works for us, and that's where we're at.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lord?
Yeah, I, we certainly Yeah, I, we certainly don't want to deny you because it's a drive-through. I mean, it's not your problem that we have 11 or 13 down that street. That's our problem, that we okayed all those if people are against those. Have you, do you have any restaurants that you use, besides inside a shopping center, that do not have drive-throughs?
Currently, we've not built a freestanding restaurant without a drive-through. We do have others. In fact, we have a lot of inline, end-cap drive-throughs now. Most of our, most of our new, new buildings for the next few years will all be drive-throughs, sit-down restaurants, because, you know, having both entities where there's a full-service restaurant inside, but it does have the drive-through outside. We, we have not entertained the property, the possibility of building a freestanding just restaurant with no, no drive-through.
And one other question. How long ago were you notified that this was a problem?
I believe as far as, I think the first recommendation came back from staff around February, or even sooner than that, maybe some January, maybe even back into December, and that's when we started working on this.
And before then, when you talked to the developer, when you wanted to go into this pad, did he indicate that there were some problems, or was there any dialogue that, that...
The only dialogue that I, again, that would have been mostly on our real estate ends. When it, when it finally got to me, they said that these had all been approved, and there might be some, some issues with P&amp;Z as far as drive-through layout, never the menu boards. But when we received the plan from the drive, from the landlord, it's as you see it right now. That was the master site plan that was approved, that was sent to us. So there was no recommendation that we saw, as far as, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't have the drive-through out front.
Harvey, was there any dialogue from you to the developer? If you can give me a little bit of...
Mayor, Councilman Lord, Mayor and Council, the, the, one of the things I'd like to correct, the, the conceptual site plan, it was a conceptual site plan that was approved with the zoning, and, and only for conceptual purposes only. In fact, the, from, at that time, when we approved the zoning with that site plan, we pointed out, staff pointed out to the master developer, that there's a problem with this fast-food restaurant, because you're showing the drive-through lane adjacent to Estrella Parkway. And he said, well, we'll address that when we get to the user later down the road. So we proved it as a conceptual, expecting that it would be addressed later down the road. So here we are, later down the road. They were, the, when we first met with Panda Express, it was pointed out to them from the pre-application meeting, the initial meeting, that that was a concern. It's not only, it's not only the, the squat box and the preview, it's the actual drive-through that has its frontage along Estrella Parkway. Our design guidelines say that the building, obviously, the prominent area along the, the street, an arterial roadway, and not just, not just a drive-through and parking. So we have that issue, and then we have the issue with the squat box and the preview board. So I think it's, those are two things that, that probably sets our community apart from others, is we have high design standards, and staff is trying to maintain those standards for others. And the other concern we have is, one thing we haven't talked about is precedent. We have others in the community that will be building drive-throughs on, on pads throughout our community, so it'll be difficult, as they drive through that and they see that, to say, well, if Panda Express can do it, why can't we? So that's, from a staff standpoint, that's where we are coming from.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Antoniak, did you, thought you raised your hand?
Yeah, because I, well, I, I think both, both sides of the arguments are respectable here, so it's definitely our, our challenge. Tian, what is, you get denied tonight. Are you on to another pad in that development? Are you dropping this altogether in Goodyear?
Yeah, that would be the alternative after here, is to drop it, because there really isn't another pad on the development. If there were, we would have looked at that alternative instead of gone through this whole process. And I wanted to address the, the issue of precedent, and Harvey and I have had many conversations about this with various council members. And from our standpoint, I mean, I, it's tough, because we understand that, and we rather, like I keep mentioning, I, we would rather avoid this altogether, but, but the idea of the precedent, we, for, we followed the ordinance. I mean, I can't address that more, and that it's not visible from the street. We read the ordinance over and over again, and what I really want to emphasize is that we have addressed the true spirit of the ordinance, which is not to have our drive-through and menu board visible from the street. And in terms of noise, that may cause, that may cause any issues with the future development, I mean, the setback, Harvey mentioned, the setback for that development is going to be even further than we can imagine. So in terms of noise, we've addressed that with the wall, the nice wall that we've designed. And also, this is going, the development is going to be there before the, I'm sorry, the, the restaurant, and the, the menu box will be there before the development is built. On top of that, the setback will be much further. And I, in terms of noise, and I think that is reflective of what has not been put in the stipulation about the squat box, I think, I, I think that can be addressed that way. But to answer your question, after this, it, it would be hard for us to find another site in Goodyear and in this development.
Let me, okay, continue my conversation here, Mayor, for a second. Was there any attempt by staff, was there any attempt by you with the developer to push the building closer to the parkway, such that the driveway might get moved back, or, or something of that fashion, such that it would give you a more advantageous result to get your drive-through to the back of the building?
We did look at several, several options in that, in that, in that spirit, looking to see if we can push the building. As we pushed the building forward, it was more to get the drive-through into the back, which the number three drawing here basically does. We actually pushed the building...
When I say, when I say move forward, I mean, in the, in the spirit of Estrella Parkway, we've talked about the smart investment, the best...
And that, and that was, that was discussed, and then when this council actually created a, what I'm calling the pork shop, and there's only a one-way street now coming out of McDonald's, so people cannot make a left out onto the lighted exit of McDonald's, we now have a one-way coming across. With everyone coming across, we'd have to go back up alongside of McDonald's. So the landlord really, and the seller really did, wanted to maintain his parking in drive-aisles in that sense.
But juxtaposed, I, I keep coming up against these things, as we, we talk about forcing, you know, and making the building a prominent feature, and yet, it's 125 feet or plus feet back from the street. It's not going to be a prominent feature. It doesn't, I mean, we're not going to get prominent buildings on Estrella Parkway until we move them closer to the street versus farther away. And the reason I was asking the question is, I'm curious if, if, I mean, it sounds like you may be up against your last-ditch effort here, but...
Mayor, Councilman Antoniak, I also spoke to the, the master developer, called him, and pleaded with him about changing the configuration, and he had indicated that everything had been already called, sold, or spoken for within the development, and turning the develop, turning the building, giving it more of a prominence along Estrella Parkway, said, well, that blocked the view of some of his building, his buildings in the rear, so he didn't want to do that, and felt like it wasn't his...
Is McDonald's approved yet?
No. It wasn't approved, really. Yes, it was.
It's approved by us?
Yes.
Further comment on this?
It's, it's disappointing, because quite frankly, I mean, all due respect to McDonald's, the biggest, one of the biggest corporations in the United States, is far less personal and far less, made far less attempts and overtures to try and, you know, meet the desires, needs, and wants of, of the city council and other policy bodies in the city.
Okay, we'll move to vote. Looks like it's going to be relatively close, and we'll go with a roll call.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one clarification for the vote? The motion didn't make any reference to the stipulations, or did you intend to include stipulations with the motion?
Part of B. Uh-huh. It's part of B.
Yeah, I didn't make, I didn't make reference to them. I, I intended to, yeah, I believe, I believe all the stipulations were...
Motion was for B. B includes...
I clarified my motion, and I just read what was in the subject line, so bear with me for one second. Yeah, I mean, I, I think the applicant would be in agreement with the nine stipulations that were in B, so if my second agreed, I would agree with this. I mean, my spirit was, my spirit of my motion was B with all nine.
I thought so.
Mr. Mayor? If I could, if, if the stipulations do apply to this development, if we could, staff would like to modify stipulation number seven. And how we'd like to modify that would be, Panda Express is proposing a wall, because a prior staff member had told them that's what we wanted. However, in looking at this further, I think the consensus is, is if the applicant could provide it, we'd rather see a natural screen, a continuous natural screen, instead of a masonry wall. Provide a softer screen for the drive-through versus just blank masonry. So that would be our recommendation for stipulation number seven.
So you're talking about a screen of plants, is that green rocks?
Yes, sir.
Oh, not, not?
Not a wall.
Not a wall? Oh.
So that, so that, so it could read something like, all portions of the drive-through lane on the east side of the restaurant shall be fully screened from adjacent center drives with a minimum four-foot-high dense landscaping, natural, you know, i.e. natural feature, uh... Screen, something like that. We've actually talked about this, and we actually came up with, because there was, there was concern if we built the landscaping, will it die, and then we'll have walls and everything? We actually said, why don't we build a wall and put landscaping in front of it? I mean, we're, we're not against that, we're, we're more, you know, willing to work with you on that as far as whatever it takes to, to create a screen wall where people can't see, and if it's a nice block or a slate wall with green foliage in front of it, which, you know, will, will be highly maintained, we have no problem with that either.
David, Mr. Mayor, come here. Now, this would, this would screen the menu board itself from, from the street, right?
Yes, sir. Our, our intent would be, in looking at that landscape island right now, that landscape island right there, we, we were looking at the, let's stay enlarged it, there isn't adequate room to provide screening, adequate screen, landscaping to screen the wall, and we would, and that's why we're looking at maybe providing a modification of stipulation, just provide natural landscaping, continuous plant screen. The way it looks now, there's not enough room, the way we view it, to provide decent landscaping, which would then hide a wall. And the applicant's right, he's, he's been trying to just provide us whatever we want, so...
And again, that stipulation, if we had to create that and lose, and actually move the whole building back and actually create a larger island, we're not, we're at some mold of that.
You're changing the stipulation. Why would you be changing the stipulation, the screen?
To be quite honest with you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Susa, I think the wall was championed by a former staff member who thought that landscaping dies and, you know, it won't be maintained. Our thought is that with proper planting and maintenance, the landscaping will remain alive, will remain green, and will provide an adequate screen for the drive-through, which would be, and we feel it'd be a much softer screen than masonry. Even, even a themed wall, even a themed masonry wall, we'd rather see greenery in that location.
But there's still room for that?
Not both.
Not both? Okay, we have a motion. Would you like to modify your motion?
Let me, let me ask you, is there any desire on council to, to see another rendering with the landscaping, or is there, do any of my peers have a desire to see that, or no? Okay, not belabor this anymore. Yeah?
My point, my point would, would be, if, if the staff is willing to make the concession, okay, does that meet the criteria of where are you about?
I, no, I think they're, I think they're taking the lesser of two evils. If, if, if and when this passes, that they would rather see landscaping than a masonry wall. Am I correct? Yeah?
Mayor, Councilman, our position is, is that it should be denied, but if the council wishes to approve it, then we feel that, you know, it's a nice-looking building, and it has a design flaw. You don't hide design flaws with walls. It's, it's softer to hide them with landscaping, but I think walls are generally harsh, they can be very harsh, so that's why, but we would prefer denial. We, we haven't backed off from that.
You know, this is a use permit we're talking about. So if you just include it in stipulation seven, that the landscaping will be whatever you want it to be, and will be maintained, and if they breach it, they breach the use permit.
I, agreed. I'm, I'm struggling with staff versus a, a very compelling applicant here, in my, in my eyes, and I...
I think we're about ready to vote.
Yeah.
You aren't worried about whether it's a wall or a plant, then?
Well, no, I would, I'll, okay, for the sake of discussion, because the motion's on the table, I'm in my motion to read that all portions of the drive-through lane on the east side of the restaurant shall be fully screened from adjacent center drives with a minimum four-feet-high landscaping, or rather, dense landscaping with proper maintenance and care, fully screening, any signage, whatever. I mean, I, you can pick up the speed of that. Et cetera.
I think we understand that.
You understand what I'm trying to say. We need to move on, too. So...
Yes.
That's, that's the motion, and the motion on the, on the floor is to approve the use permit. So if you vote, you want it, you vote aye. If you want to deny the use permit, which is a recommendation from staff, then you vote nay.
No, 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 no. My amendment, I, I have, I put an amendment, nobody seconded my amendment.
I thought you were just including that in your...
Oh, I was, okay.
I'll second it.
Well, I, I thought you wanted an amendment to go up down on...
Okay, well, that's the right way to do it.
Did you just modify your first motion?
No, I was making a motion, I was amending my motion as I stated.
Amended.
I thought you were...
I'll second.
Sorry.
Okay, so we have an amendment to the motion, changing number seven to include landscaping versus a decorative screen wall of the same size and density. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Aye.
Okay, six, one, we approve that there'll be landscaping versus a wall.
Amendment.
Yes, okay?
Right, right.
Okay, now, now we're to the approval. Any further comment on the use permit? Okay, the motion?
Well, yes, there is. Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
I mean, we go to a lot of trouble to make, to set up codes and, and, set a city up so we are apart from any other city in the, in the state, and yet, we go over these things. We're just another city. We continue to do this kind of thing, we're just another city. We're not, we're not above, or above any other, or, or outside of anything other than just another city. And that's what, I guess, disappoints me. This is not what I thought we were, that we should be approving, because this is an example of that. We spend a lot of time in council hours, changing things so that it will be better for the city, and then we make variances to that to allow whatever we want to have come in. And that's, I guess, is very disappointing to me, very disappointing.
Thank you. Let me go to, well, I, I had Councilmember Antoniak next.
I was going to say, and while, while, while the vice mayor's profound remarks didn't necessarily convince me one way or another, I, I am definitely, obviously, I belabored everybody, and you're all very frustrated with this council member this evening, I'm, I'm sure. You know, I've, I have to, and I, and I've said this in the past a number of times, but to Panda Express, Tian, and the rest, and a gentleman, I forgot your first name, but I've got to go with Harvey and his staff on this one, while I did make the motion. You know, I, I think it's something that we're going to have to pay attention to, and while there's going to be an example here, we've got to figure out whether or not the next one is going to be better. I'm, I'm frustrated about the, and I think everybody senses that this evening, about the contradictory remarks that we have in our ordinances as it relates to signage, as it relates to prominent buildings being the feature on the street, and yet, the developer won't make any amends to move the building forward because his visibleness from, from the back of the property will, will be compromised when we're trying to have something that is, is up against Estrella Parkway, such that it's not only automobile-friendly, but it's pedestrian-friendly as well. I, I would like, and that's where I was trying to get this evening, but I don't sense that we're going to get there, is my sense. I'd like to see you move it closer to the, closer to the street, give yourself more, more room in the back, but I got to support, I got to support the staff, that, you know, it's, it's a 51-49 kind of thing for me, and I, I've... know, it's, it's a 51-49 kind of thing for me, and I've gotta go with the staff on this one.
Councilmember Scott?
I'm not gonna make any more comments, I think we've said everything it has to say, we'd like to see a roll call here.
Well, Councilmember Lord.
I just have one comment. I promised you one thing, we met, that we would have dialogue, that we would have your opportunity to talk. I felt when I went to the planning and zoning, that, that there was no opportunity there for dialogue, they just cut you off totally, and so that has happened tonight, and that's, that's what I was looking for. I, again, feel like we need to go along with staff on this for many reasons, it wasn't just one, so I, I agree with Councilmember Antoniak's sentiments always.
Very frustrating, though.
Very frustrating.
Okay, it looks like we may not need a roll call vote. The motion on the floor is to accept, to approve the use permit.
Correct.
As modified with stipulation number seven, so if you're in favor of the use permit, you vote aye, if you're opposed, you vote nay. Okay, and by the way, we are very thankful for your positive and professional approach to this task over the last several months, good working with you. I know that doesn't do a lot for you, but, okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the use permit signify by stating aye. All those opposed signify by stating nay.
Nay.
Okay, Councilmember Holland, I didn't get you.
Nay.
Okay, so was six to one opposed to the use permit, correct?
So some.
That's what you, that's what I got, six to one opposed.
Harvey, I just make a plea that future PADs, let's make stipulations, like, let's take the opportunity to these at the land use time, not a PAD, and let's not go on the, lesson learned for all of us here, let's not go into developer work. We don't wanna drive through facing the street, at the end of the day, let's stipulate that at the zoning time.
Okay, we'll now move to C, and we're gonna handle C, D, and E together, we'll take separate motions on each, but Las Briesas Phase Two, Harvey, you're gonna brief them all at once, correct?
Mayor, council members, I'm gonna discuss the development agreement, and then my able assistant here, Steve Crecci, is going to, to the zoning and plat. The property is Las Briesas Phase Two, the council has, on the consent agenda this evening, approved a final plat for Phase One, which is located at the southeast corner of Lower Buckeye Road and Perryville, and this property is located generally north of Broadway, south of Lower Buckeye, west of Citrus Road, and, and east of Perryville Road. It includes 313 acres, it's already in the city. Las Briesas Phase Two, this is a little bit more complicated development agreement than some of the other ones that we've done in the, in the West Goodyear area. This property was included as part of what is known as additional property within the Canyon Trails Development Agreement. The Canyon Trails Development Agreement covered three phases of their property, or two phases of their property, and then had an exhibit at the end of the agreement that said, "Well, we can, we can annex, meaning incorporate into the development agreement additional property," and this was some additional property that was included in that. So the developer had the right to incorporate this property into the Canyon Trails Development Agreement with all the rights as well as obligations of the development agreement for them, and, and one of the things, so they, they developed their property in accordance with, primarily accordance to the Canyon Trails Development Agreement with some exceptions, and staff felt this was, was concerned about this, since they were not a participant in the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding, where they were gonna participate in the infrastructure financing. So with, through the negotiations with the developer, we've reached somewhat of a, well, not somewhat, we have reached a compromise position. So the development agreement you have here mirrors the Memorandum of Understanding in most respects, but also gives the developer some consideration with the Canyon Trails Development Agreement. So hopefully I've set the stage, I'll tell you what the differences, differences are. Well, let me tell you, the developer will be making the contribution, the prepayment contribution for the wastewater treatment plan expansion at 3405 per unit, the fire EMS contribution upfront at 738, the cost recovery administration fee at $41 per unit, and then transfer water rights at $25 per acre. Now, those four concepts are also in the Memorandum of Understanding, mirror the other development agreements in the West Goodyear area. What they're, what's a little bit different is they will not be making a prepayment on the water facilities, they are installing certain water facilities, but they won't be prepaying the development fees for that, they'll be paying as they go through develop, through permit. In addition, the, the developer is seeking three, a little over three units per acre, 3.17 dwelling units per, net density on this project, that's a little bit higher than the 2.85 dwelling units per acre that, that was the minimum density in the MOU. In addition, they've asked for 55-foot-wide lots, there are some of the lots are 55-foot-wide lots, and that is consistent with the Canyon Trails Development Agreement, so that's another consideration for the upfront contributions. So staff feels that this is a fair compromise between the two development agreements, and the city has made whole, at least with wastewater and fire and EMS services, and is receiving water fees at time of permit. So with that stated, I'll turn the mic over to Steve, who's gonna give you a brief overview
Mr. Mayor, council members, this will be just a brief follow-up to Harvey on the rezon and the preplat, I'm trying to combine both. We're looking at 312 acres here with Las Briesas Phase Two, final PAD zoning is proposed. With the plat, we have, we're looking at 912 single-family lots, an elementary school, and a 21-plus-acre commercial site. Variety of lot sizes are proposed, Harvey did mention the 55-foot-wide lots, the lots will go up to 80 feet wide in this subdivision. Just a quick note, the 55-foot-wide lots, the number they're proposing, it's about 43% of the total lots within Las Briesas Phase Two. Overall, net density was mentioned, it's 3.17 dwelling units per acre. With that, we have a 21.8-acre school site, 16.6 acres for the school, and it'll be accompanied by a 5.2-acre park. 58 acres of open space are provided in Las Briesas Phase Two, with that, that's about 20% of the project total. Within that open space, we're looking at nine individual parks, typical amenities, including sports fields and courts, tot lots on Ramadas. We also have a portion of citywide equestrian trail running north-south through Las Briesas, from Broadway up to Lower Buckeye Road and this general location here, basically running up through the middle of the project. Staff is recommending approval subject to the stipulations in the staff report. Findings for the increased density include the amount of open space, the configuration of the open space, and provision of an elementary school site. The only change to the stipulations, and that will be number 20 in the rezon, staff report, and number 25 in the preliminary plat, staff report, it's the same stipulation, just different numbers. We're recommending that that stipulation be removed. Applicants already started work on relocation of that sewer line, so the need for that financial surety was not needed.
You need to repeat that for me?
Yeah.
Twenty and twenty-five, right? One is rezoned and one is the plat, give us the numbers again.
Mr. Mayor, it's number 20 in the rezon, and number 25 in the preliminary plat.
Okay, to remove?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that concludes my part.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Opportunity for the applicant?
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, for the record, my name is Tom Blake, representing Taylor Woodrow Homes, 6720 North Scottsdale Road in Scottsdale. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and thanks to staff for their recommending approval, as well as the staff report. Just a couple of brief comments, and then I'll just be available to answer any questions. And I should say as well, we also have our planner and engineer here, Matt Baki with Goodwin and Marshall, who's also available for any technical questions. The 55-foot lots, we're well aware that that is not what council and P and Z intended or has wanted for this area. We've made a concerted effort to make them deeper, so one thing I do wanna note is they're 117 feet deep, as opposed to 110 feet deep, which is more standard in some of the other Canyon Trails developments, so by comparison, you get about the same lot size if you're doing a 60-by-110 versus a 55-by-117. Our history, in every study we've ever done, has shown people would prefer seven feet in their backyard, as opposed to another five feet on the side yard, which is why we did it, it was not intending to disregard the wishes of the council. The other thing I'd say, just, hopefully you've had a chance to look through the PAD, we think it's a great plan, there's over 20% open space, we think the amenities far exceed what has been done in some of the other Canyon Trails developments that, quite frankly, we got in in the middle of, this is one we've had control of from the get-go, there's a 65-foot trail system throughout here, there's pocket parks, tree-lined streets, we think it's, we're real proud of it, and we hope you feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Okay, then we'll go to the, consider adoption of the resolution approving the development agreement, which was briefed by Harvey Kraus. Would the clerk read the resolution by title only, please?
Resolution 06-1063, a resolution of the mayor council of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving a development agreement with Taylor Woodrow Incorporated and Arizona Corporation to facilitate the development of approximately 313 acres known as Las Briesas Phase Two, and providing an effective date.
Do I have a motion?
Motion except resolution. It's a 2006 dash 1063.
Motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier, it's open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the only clarification I wanted to make, you can, this proposal, this resolution, was a comment regarding the 55-foot lots, and it was pretty much clarified by the presenters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holland?
I just have one question that I didn't think was clear in here, we're gonna have the city's water reclamation facility by 2.0 million gallons, and where would that treatment take place? John?
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, it would be treated at the 157th Water Reclamation Facility.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
We'll now move to consider adoption of the ordinance to rezon the acreage, and I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance 06-1020, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, providing for conditional rezoning of 312.7 acres of land from the agricultural urban district to the final planned area development district for residential development known as Las Briesas Phase Two, generally located at the northeast corner of Perryville Road and Broadway Road, amending supplementary zoning map number 05219 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you, in the motion, would the person making the motion please recommend deletion of step 20? Could I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance as, or, yeah, ordinance 06-dash-1-020, as read by the clerk, removing stipulation number 20.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Lord, open for discussion. Councilmember Antoniak?
I do, do have just one brief question, I don't mind whether the applicant will and/or staff answer it. Tell me the story real briefly on the accept parcel up there, that I believe it Dale McDonald's parcel, or whatever I read.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmember Antoniak, actually, that one is Donnie King's property, Mr. and Mrs. King, we were able to acquire Mr. McDonald's property, as well as the Shore property. Unfortunately, with Mr. and Mrs. King, they, they have a beautiful house there, it was, the amount of money they were looking for was more than, and this may not be exact, but six or seven times what we were paying for the rest, and it wasn't, they weren't being greedy, it was just, it was knocking down a beautiful house to put down.
So it intends to stay residential?
It does, yes.
Okay, and are you building then a wall around their property?
Yes, we're buffering it, yes.
That answers my question, satisfies my, any concern it might have had.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
Okay, we'll now move to preliminary plat for Las Briesas Phase Two, and in the motion, please include removal of step 25. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the preliminary plat for Las Briesas Phase Two, removing stipulation number 25.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Sousa, open for discussion. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The aye's have a 7-0. We do have one item left on our agenda, it was moved through consent. Two. Thank you.
You didn't think all the finance staff was just hanging out there?
Oh, on. It's cute. It is cute, on the consent agenda, Al.
What do you think I did? Just what?
Al Gonzalez, or, Mr. Cleveland, it's your call.
Make sure Gary's awake for this.
Gary, would you like to come sit up here in line?
Ken, it's eight Q, eight Q, it's the last item on our agenda now. You wanna come up here, Gary?
Torture you, make you sit up here at that.
All right, you ready? Mayor Kavanaugh, members of council, I'm Al Gonzalez, and the project manager on the Van Buren Project, and here to answer your questions. What I have displayed right now on the easel is a, is an aerial showing the limits of construction, it'll be from Van Buren, from Estrella Parkway to Bitchfield Road. Display as well, the road geometrics, which will consist of, road geometrics will consist of five lanes, three lanes going eastbound, two westbound for a certain distance from Estrella Parkway going east, then we'll, we'll narrow that down to accommodate some of the right-of-way there from four lanes to, well, from five lanes to four lanes with a raised median, and then going farther east to Bitchfield Road will tie into the existing conditions at that location, which is four lanes to in each direction, without the median in the middle. Questions?
Could you describe the bridge that's gonna, is, is there a bridge coming over the Bullard Wash, or what's being planned for there?
Yes, there is a bridge over Bullard Wash, and it's a, I'm sorry, David.
David Ramirez, city engineer, it's a five-lane concrete slab bridge, it's actually two bridges, one in each direction, the center where the raised median would normally be. The center where the raised median would normally be will be open. It'll be approximately 100 feet long. The Bullard Wash is actually 300 feet long, but on either side will transition from a 300-foot width channel to a 100-foot wide bridge. So, it'll narrow down. Also, as part of the construction, we have an allowance in the GMP for, for bridge art or some type of bridge enhancement, which we haven't fully defined yet. It's actually being worked on now for the McDowell Road Bridge as an association with the improvement district. And we'll see what comes out of that effort that's going on now and we'll try to apply the same type of treatment to the Van Buren Bridge.
Okay. Gary, any more?
No, I'm done. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Other comments from the public? Okay, then why don't we move to the council and we'll ask for a motion and then we'll discuss it. Recommendation is to award a construction manager at risk in the contract. And I think you can all read that, but the person making the motion should probably read that, so. Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, go ahead. Mr. Mayor, I move to council award a construction manager at risk contract in the amount of $15,491,721.73 to Pullis Construction Incorporated for the improvement of Van Buren Street from Litchfield Road to Australia Parkway. So, move.
I second that. Just have a question. Okay, motion, I have a comment. Motion, Councilmember Sousa, and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. It's open for discussion.
Does staff need, I think, does staff need the second part in that motion?
You need to read the authorize.
Yes.
They're looking for the and authorize an increase in the project budget to $21,222,631 to include. So, I'll remove my second, so.
And further, and authorize an increase in the project budget to $21,222,631 to include consultant service and ROW acquisition.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Sousa and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. And very good catch, Rob. Thank you. Because that is important. That's key.
That's why I got removed from consent.
Okay.
I thought that was why I got removed from consent.
Opportunity for discussion. Councilmember Sousa?
Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez, or maybe the engineer can answer the question. What is the total cost of the bridges? Can you give me that second?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, the GMP cost police have provided us is in the realm of $1.2 million for the bridge.
Or the bridge, just as, or the bridge?
Just for the bridge itself. What we have to take into consideration with that cost, what's not in that cost are the like traffic, control, amenities, and things of that nature too as well. The channelization, there are some other items there that aren't inclusive of that 1.2 that we would have to wrap into it to get a, the whole dollar figure for that.
Do you have any idea, Al, what the cost per mile works out to now?
Mr. Mayor Cavanaugh and Councilmember Sousa, right now, our, if we take a look at five lanes, we're looking at two miles. We're looking at somewhere roughly between, I'm going to say roughly around $10 million a mile. That's what it comes out to. Construction costs are, I might have to take a look at my cost figures here real quick. Just bear with me. I'm sorry. Yeah, 7, 7.25 million per mile.
Mile, yeah.
Yes, at five lanes.
And really, the 21 million plus that we've authorized, you, in addition to the 15 million, really would be for increased cost as construction costs go up during the course of the construction?
Yes, Councilmember Sousa, yes, it's several things. We had a little slight increase in the scope, which we had with the scope of work, which added the fifth lane and as well the storm drain system as well, the cost, material cost escalations and right-of-way cost escalations as well.
And there's no way that you can lock those material costs in, is that right?
At this time, Councilmember Sousa, they are locked in.
They are locked.
We are there for about 30, about 60 days or so. And we don't know what would happen beyond that point in time.
And this project is going to run how long?
This project here is scheduled to be completed within a year after we start construction.
Okay. So, there is a possibility of it to be an escalation of cost for materials at some point in time.
If we do experience that, we do have some cost contingency in there that would cover any cost escalations at this time. The guaranteed maximum price that has been provided to us by police construction is the cost that they guarantee that that project should be constructed within.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Antoniak?
You just detailed probably, the next question I was pondering here, which was why was the increase? And it sounds like the increase was justified. I would just ask that maybe next time it's just a little bit more detailed in the COAC. Justifies it a little bit more.
Okay, so, is our budget 15 million and we're adding 5 million to it? Or, that's the way it reads?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's-
That's a 25% increase in the budget for the roadway. What, you know, right now, the current oil is down about 10 bucks. Gas is down. Asphalt will be receding, hopefully. And I'm not saying that's going to continue, but there's reasonableness that, there's reason to assume that it very well could continue that there'll be a decline in prices. If that should happen, does this come in under? In other words, if the prices go up, the city's on the hook. How about if the prices go down?
Mayor-
How about if the price asphalt, which is very likely to go down, how about if that was-
Mayor Cavanaugh, we don't have any clauses in there for reduction of materials, but we do have that there for the escalation of cost, of increases of cost materials. We do have a contingency in there that if it's not utilized, that will all come back to the city, which is roughly 500,000 or so.
I don't understand that. What comes back to the city?
The contingency would come back. There is a contingency, there's a contingency in the guaranteed maximum price, which is there to be utilized for cost increases if they should occur. If those cost increases do not occur-
Okay.
-and if we don't find any unforeseen conditions out there, then that money will come back to the city. And that isn't-
The question's a good one. When we develop these contracts, perhaps we, with our economy fluctuating, and certainly going to fluctuate a lot more, maybe we should build that in there so it works both ways.
Ask the contractor.
Say again?
Invite the contractor.
Okay.
My name is Johnny Mott. I'm with Police Construction. If it goes through, I'll be the project manager of the project. We have a guaranteed maximum price. Is the guarantee that we have prices locked in for a year, okay? We also have contingencies in there with asphalt, electrical, survey, that for these, if anything goes crazy and goes beyond and above, and if we don't use these contingencies, they all, we don't get them. You guys get them back. We have, right now, there's approximately $550,000 worth of contingencies for construction, for police construction, for any unforeseen things, because we don't have approved plans right now. These were bid on a 95% approved of plans, okay? So, we also have, I believe there's $100,000 in there for asphalt escalation, for allowances. We have 17.5 for survey, any survey increases. And we also have 50,000 for some landscaping. And there's electrical allowance in there also. So, if none of that money's used, that's in the GMP, the 15 for 19, 7, 21, or whatever the dollar is. Those are all included in that, in that GMP. That's why it's a GMP. It's a guaranteed maximum price, not a minimum price, because if we don't use the money, it goes right back to the city. So, if we did our job properly, you'll be getting some of that money back. If we studied the plans and used our experience and there's no catastrophe out there, that money's all going to come back to the city.
So, the 15, 4, 9, 1 includes the half a million or so in contingency?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And however back, and that's good, but-
There's also 300,000 in there for bridge artwork.
You know, the fact is that March to April, or no, excuse me, March to June was really the apex in the cost of resources around here. And they just bid some property in Tucson, wrote construction, and came in 13% higher than the original estimate of a couple of years ago. They were worried about it going to 27. So, it may be that prices are starting to moderate. And I'm talking about concrete, I'm talking about cement, excuse me, and asphalt. And of course, just the cost of gas to get your people to their work site and operate your diesel. So, those prices may be coming down. I just hate for us to be tapped into a price that is based on an environment that's changed. And so, I don't know what to do about that unless we rebid the contract and everybody here within, throw darts at me probably. So, I'm not sure I want to suggest that. But I, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, it is a valid question about whether or not there is a way to reconsider the pricing. The only option that legal has given to us is the ability to go back and reopen the bid process and start over, which is about a 60-day process. Part of the critical nature of this project is to be able to alleviate a lot of the pressure on I-10. I-10 construction, which is intended to start probably October next year, is going to dump a lot of people onto our surface streets. Almost simultaneously, we are going to be starting the improvement district that you heard about for the West Core Mall. So, we're going to have three surface streets, a freeway and two surface streets, all within a mile of each other, where people are going to be jamming up what is currently two lanes in both, one, two-lane roadways, north and south of the freeway, trying to carry a lot of that traffic. So, the staff research was whether or not to bring this forward, given the existing conditions and the numbers that we have here, or go back out on the street and hope that there are any hungry contractors out there that might come back with a lower price. We have no certainty that we're going to have contractors coming back. What we would hope is that, you know, through the goodness of the contractor's heart, that he might find that, hey, you know, there has been a 20% decline in oil costs and the asphalt went down, and maybe we can work something out to get part of that money back. But that's, that's about as close as we can come to any certainty of getting additional money beyond the contingency and some of the other provisions that we spoke of. I appreciate Johnny.
But to filter down, that cost and change, to filter down that quickly doesn't happen. I mean, it-
That's what we don't know.
That's the big enough.
I guess that's my view, looking at things, that it does happen, but the expediency of it is not like, that would be, maybe make a difference in the timeframe which we're going to build this road. Just throwing that out.
You make a very good point about the streets being pressured, they're being pressured now when you get back up west of Litchfield Road and Australia Parkway. No question about that. Because there's a lot of traffic coming in on McDowell Road and Litchfield Road because of that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Sousa, I think this last week was a classic example. We have an accident at Litchfield Road on the freeway. And right behind it, we have an accident jackrabbit. We only have two exits, basically Australia Parkway and Cotton Lane, to take all that traffic. They only have one place to go. Fortunately, some people were listening, because on Friday, you saw a huge increase in traffic on MC-85. If it hadn't been for that, Van Buren, McDowell Road would have been worse than they, they were in that particular circumstance. And that was morning rush hour traffic. So, if I remember correctly, Cato told me that we were very fortunate that they were able to reopen the freeway within about an hour, two hours of the incident, when they had predicted it was going to be a four-hour closure.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I like, I like your train of thought and have always, or would always favor the idea of creative, and not to this specific contract, I think we need to get moving on this, but I think as we let contracts over the next several months with prices, maybe we ought to be thinking about incentives in the sense of expediency of those contracts. And if they get them done, you know, 90 days early, 60 days early, or heck, six months early, three months early, that we give a bonus to the contractor to get in and out as quickly as possible in a diligent manner. At the same time, if they are, you know, greatly under budget, let's discuss incentives to be greatly under budget as well. Let's, look, all of those things that are within the parameters of the laws that we're bound by, we're going to have some pretty aggressive construction activity that's going to be occurring. Let's make the schedule an incentive to finish that as robust and as aggressive as the construction projects themselves. And I think you'd see that contractors will respond to that.
Yeah, that's just everybody's information. I-10 widening, we almost lost that because the cost of increase in construction. And it wasn't necessarily because it costs more to build it, it was because people who didn't want it built used construction cost increases as a reason not to do it. They went up 40 to 70% in a year. That's over. And so, now are they going to come down? We don't, we don't know for sure, but they look like they're tending in that direction. But anyway, bad timing and we got to get this road built. Okay, so, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, award the construction manager at risk contract and increase the project budget to $21,222,631? Sign if I was stating aye.
Aye.
Close, the ayes have a 7-0. And any inquiries of staff, my council?
We didn't get any action items this time.
There was one, I thought.
Oh, three, okay.
Potentially three.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the first one that was brought up was to look at the board wash park. That would be brought back as a workstation item. Second one was in terms of the issue of Panda Express, whether or not we need to go back and look at our sign ordinance in terms of its language. The third one was the latest conversation you had in terms of looking at our contract methods and determine is there a way to incorporate expedited construction bonuses, as well as if there are bonuses in reverse in terms of pricing as prices come down.
Yeah, there was one other item. I don't know if the council wants to proceed on this, but I think it was Councilmember Sousa, I know it was, asked if they could do a people, a survey of people in the area, whether or not the people want it enclosed or open mall.
Well, I think I, I felt that that request was a-
I think that's been done already. Am I correct? I just know from the city center, from information we got, that that, that was done on the mall. Is that, is anybody in the staff here can confirm that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Lord, I think what we can do here is at least go back to West Core and mention that that comment was raised by Councilman Sousa and that, see what their current survey information is, because originally that was some months ago. Have they done anything recently that we might be able to have them bring back and share with the council?
Can you give me an idea of what results were of our, regarding these?
Rather than trying to guess, can we just send it out to us, the other poll? Unless somebody knows exactly what the results are?
I think there's results somewhere.
We'll get some information back to the council on this matter.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment on the stuff about the Panda Express issue this evening. You know, I don't know that you need to necessarily go back and look at the sign ordinance. I just, as staff, anytime we have a dialogue like that, I would go back and say, I'm going to make, make sure that conversation doesn't happen again. I think that's incumbent upon you as staff. I don't necessarily think it's a task that has to be mentioned at the end of the evening specifically. So, just a, just a note. So, just a, just a note.
Thank you for the time you all spent with us tonight. It's been a long night.